Good afternoon, everyone. So just saying hi to everybody.
Hello.
So welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM, Monday, November 1st, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, statewide transportation improvement fund update. We have some people online possibly, or?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Debone. For the record, Whitney Hale Administrative Services. I'll just go ahead and introduce this item and then turn it over to our experts. Today with us, we have Andrea Brough, who's the Transportation Director for Cascade East Transit, and Ashley Moni, who's the Strategic Programs and Partnerships Coordinator for Cascades East Transit. They'll be providing the board an update on our fiscal year 2123 statewide transportation improvement fund projects, which the board, if you'll recall, reviewed and approved in January. After that occurred, staff submitted the STIF application to ODOT, and that application was reviewed and approved. We've since executed agreements for the projects that the board approved, both with ODOT and with Cascade East Transit. So today, staff from Cascade East will be providing you an update on implementation of those projects and an orientation of what we can come to expect in the coming biennium. So I'll go ahead and turn things over to Andrea and Ashley.
Great, thank you. And welcome for joining us, live, in person, in the room.
Thank you, thank you, Whitney, for the intro. My name is Andrea Brough. I'm the Transportation Director for Cascades East Transit. I believe it's been a while since we've been in front of you guys, so I wanted to provide a general update. And then I'll turn it to Ashley to provide some of the specifics on our STIF projects. So at a high level, we've been able to implement probably roughly a third of our projects in the 1921 cycle and carry them over into this coming STIF cycle. Things that have held up the process, obviously the pandemic, driver shortages, and manufacturing supply chain with our fleet. We have been able to procure some of the vehicles to increase service in and throughout Deschutes County. Struggling to get people to drive those vehicles is where I'm at right now. I would say other shifts in the 2123 STIF cycle, we moved away from expansion in terms of funding, and we can now fund current operations. I believe Commissioner Dare is aware that we want to dedicate some of the STIF funding to potentially increasing driver wages to increase the attraction and skill level to come to work for Cascades East Transit. And then some other bigger ticket items that I will mention is, I am working closely with the general obligation bond for mobility hub development in conjunction with some STIF funds to build a second location here in the city of Bend. And then, working on the RFP process to actually have a project management come in and do from the soup to nuts of a mobility hub. So that's kind of where I am, big picture. But I'll turn it over to Ashley, who's going to provide some of the specifics on our projects. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So just to kind of tag on to Andrea's general update about the STIF program, I'll also add that another big change from the last biennium to the current biennium we're in right now was the fact that we were also able to rollover funds. So the numbers that you see on the memo, those project totals also include rollover funds from the previous biennium. Another big change from our initial biennium to the one that we're in now, 2123, is that we kind of changed the entire structure for the way that we actually structured the STIF plan itself. Not just for us here in central Oregon, but across the state, STIF, this was the first time for all of us to go through this process of, you know, coming up with these projects, having them go through a public input process with our committees. In the first go around, we were very, very specific with the projects that we were funding, how we were writing them in the plan. And this go around, you'll see that rather than having, as you know, 30 different projects, we actually have larger, broader buckets. And the main reason for that is that it gives us a little bit more flexibility. And in addition, it also just really cuts through a lot of the bureaucratic and administrative red tape that we essentially created by having these really specific project buckets. So this was just lesson learned from the first biennium, rolling into the second biennium, having these larger funding buckets.
Pretty detailed spreadsheets there about the specific project.
Yes. So, yeah, so definitely lesson learned, and everybody did it differently, but it was a good lesson learned for us, and much more helpful in working with the county now moving forward. It's just easier for us to do the reporting and reconciling for the project funds. So now jumping into, you know, some of the actual projects, the first big bucket here was continued service operations. And just wanted to give a quick update on the increased frequency project. This is for increased frequency 15 to 20 minutes along Greenwood and Third Street. We have the service planning for that is basically complete. We're ready to go with the vehicles. As Andrea mentioned, a big challenge for us has been not having enough drivers. And so we are holding back from moving forward with that project and actually getting tires on the road when we're in a better spot, driver-wise. But the great news is, is the vehicles have been delivered, and we do have the service planning completed for that. And that will provide 15 to 20 minute service during the peak hours for those major routes that cut through the heart of Bend. We are at 40% complete for the northeast and southeast design drawings. These are really exciting projects. They will provide the coverage. In the city of Bend, if you look at where our routes currently exist, there's a big gap in northeast and southeast Bend. I mean, as you know, there's a ton of construction, lots of residential, you know, buildings, people are moving there. We've got a lot of potential employers who are there as well. And so with these two routes, we'll be able to provide that extra coverage that's needed in those areas in the city of Bend. I'll note that for Route 8, which is the northeast route, this is going to be our first time implementing a route that does not actually go all the way to Hawthorne Station. This is really exciting, because as Andrea mentioned, we are moving towards a mobility hub model. And with mobility hubs, we have an opportunity to restructure the way that all of our routes are created. And for this new northeast Bend route, we will be able to test that with our riders for the first time. And so it will provide great connections to folks who are trying to get to shopping destinations in eastern Bend. We heard from a lot of folks in those neighborhoods that they really wanted to be able to get to places like Costco, you know, and those larger shopping destinations in the eastern part of the city. And they weren't able to make those connections with our services the way they currently exist. And so with this new route, there's a lot of overlap with the other routes that connect to the eastern part of the city, as well as up to Cascade Village Mall. Any questions? Although I've rambled a little bit here, I just want to make sure I address any questions that you have thus far. Okay.
Well, question, so we're talking about building out the system in Bend, a lot of those updates just now. How's the, I think of the road infrastructure, you know, I rode the bus in from Lapine, not this year, last year though. So I rode it, I did ride it to Sun River this summer. But there's just some intersections and some potholes, you know, over time. So my point is, the infrastructure of the routes, you know, is there good coordination with the city of Bend in being able to make sure that the specific lanes and intersections and choices that need to be made by the drivers are supported by the maintenance? And is there possibly a way to help the city with that if there's big needs?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, of course, I can get some more detail for you, but everything that my understand about the planning for those routes is that there has been extremely close coordination with the city of Bend throughout the entire process. It started back with Karen Morris being a part of the ADA discussions to ensure that all the route, the route itself and the bus stop locations adhered to ADA policies and requirements. Also, our team just recently did a kind of test run with city of Bend staff onboard the bus to see in practice, like what that would look like. One of the pieces I heard from the team was that the way that the route was, they were thinking about having a couple stops somewhere along Empire. And when the bus was physically where they thought the stop may be, it was very clear that it was not a super safe or a great spot to have a vehicle. So.
They're not referring to just specific, you know, curb edges and potholes and width of the road and angle of the road, because it's a lot different than a small car and kind of weaving through than a bus just hitting the pothole that can't drive around, that kind of stuff. That was my experience.
Yeah, for sure. It sounds like it was a really illuminating experience for the team to be together with city staff to, you know, look, test out this route. And right now, we're about 40% of the way through the design phase, so we're pretty far along. So the goal at this point is that the stops that we have already have been vetted fairly well at this point, just because we're far along in the process. But if some, you know, major changes do have to be made, there's a possibility.
As I say, I guess, you know, I'm thinking from the driver or the rider's point of view, if there's like, oh, that one, just a bump in the road, you know, don't even call it a pothole, you know, the MPO could help coordinate with, oh yeah, let's make that route smoother, you know, or whatever. And then, you know, co-act and stuff too, so.
I'll add that daily and operationally, I work with the city of Bend Detour Office and Communications and things related to all of the nuances of what's being repaved or milled. And so we, I coordinate with those folks, particularly on the Newport one, on how we can, you know, improve the route, et cetera. So there is that ongoing conversation outside of projects. Yes.
Great.
Another, oh, I do have something. Andrea and Ashley, okay, we've been talking about the homeless and what are we going to do with the homeless here. And one of the ideas that we as county commissioners have been talking about is getting some property maybe out of town aways, not that far out of town, but something that would actually demand that we have a bus route for those homeless people that are now living in their RVs out there and they don't have something to drive. I was telling people, you know, we have millions of dollars of funding. Okay, my question to you two is, how long would it take to, if we could put that together, how long would it take to implement, actually have that bus route working? Is that something that we're going to have to wait three years on through the state, or is it something that we could really, like, maybe put it together faster than we can imagine?
And I can take this. I mean, I would say, we have the fleet, drivers are in question. To give you an example, we did it with the cooling shelters this summer, within 12 hours. We did it in the city of Redmond to the Methodist Church within a day, where we take those from, you know, some of the encampments out there in China Hat Road as well, bringing them into the shelters. So we've done it on a micro level already. So I don't think it would, it doesn't involve identifying it as a project. Within STIF, you can use those funds directly for the operations.
That is wonderful. That's just what I really wanted to hear. So thanks for letting the public know that it is clearly possible.
The other really important part of that would be the long-term operating cost. So, I mean, if we are, I'm personally somewhat skeptical of the idea of setting up an authorized homeless encampment out, you know, out, out in the hinterlands in the county. And I get, I'm wondering if you have any ballpark sense of what it would take to run essentially an entirely new route multiple times a day to such a location?
Just kind of a base figure for everyone here, operationally to run a route pretty much every day per year, it's between 30,000 and 40,000. That includes your revenue hour of service. I will say, one potential barrier that I work with ODOT is, they do have a huge issue with what we call charter service, that you would design a service for a particular group of people that's not available for the rest of the public. So when we would design it, it would have to be publicly scheduled, ADA compliant, available to anybody so that it wouldn't be just a particular group that could ride it and nobody else. So that's something we would have to consider into the equation.
And you'd want to have multiple stops along the way, as opposed to just like going out to one place and coming back?
Yeah, because that dips into that charter service that makes ODOT nervous.
Okay. And 30,000 or 40,000, that's fully loaded, that's, you know, kind of what it took to acquire that vehicle and have those drivers and everything?
Yeah, I would say that figure is probably with existing fleet, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then are rides all free still, no fares?
Correct. And just an update on where I am with that. So we are probably going to be at least fareless for all of our routes through the next spring or summer. We do have our financial team looking at that on whether we can maintain fare-free transit, excluding recreational services for the foreseeable future.
Was that excluding fare-free transit? I was, which logic did you say there?
Excluding our recreational services. So that's the service going up to Mount Bachelor, riding the river. So essentially, all of our.
So to keep them fareless would be the goal or not? I've.
Sorry about that. We keep the other services fareless, but recreational would still collect a fare because we have no funding source for them.
But would that be a goal, is to keep fareless rides?
I would say that's my goal.
Well, so, I mean, that's good to discuss, though, too, because, you know, we're taking payroll dollars, we're building out a transportation system. It hasn't been a choice rider situation yet. You know, I'm still looking for that moment where like, oh, look at all the people riding the bus, for whatever, you know, whatever that is. And is it always going to be fareless? And, you know, we do have the budget kind of discussion opportunity at the county commission level.
And we're continuing to keep a finger on the pulse. I mean, this is a huge discussion across the country right now. Much bigger agencies are also making this transition. I know, like, Kansas City is fare-free. So we're definitely keeping a finger on the pulse of this to see what would make the most sense. But it's been a really great accidental result of the pandemic was that we kind of got to test this out. And we were, you know, really anticipating this would be a great opportunity to test that out, so.
So, yeah, what would, so, kind of a touchy subject, maybe, you know, what's the goal, then? So we have buses that we can't hire people for that are possibly underutilized, and we're sharing that service for anybody that wants it?
Well, I mean, we also need.
Is it because of climate change? I mean, I'm just trying to understand the big picture.
We also, we also need to understand the, you know, the huge impact that COVID has had on bus ridership. I mean, there was, you know, I won't be able to remember the numbers off the top of my head, but the hundreds of thousands of rides that were being taken prior to COVID, I mean, that is a very meaningful, very meaningful contribution to transporting our community members to work, to school.
A lot of people are going to ride the bus.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, like, I, that was what I wanted to ask about, was kind of, you know, at this point, do we have a sense of, of how much, you know, continuing fear of COVID infection, you know, being, the hassle of having to wear a mask, et cetera, et cetera, is keeping people from riding the bus? And do we have any feel for how bus ridership will kind of respond when, someday, when we don't have to worry about COVID very much anymore?
Yeah, and so I would say, you know, certain segments in our modeling hit different than others. So I will say, Bend dial-a-ride bounced back immediately. You know, the second people can return to church on Sundays, our Sunday dial-a-ride schedule was packed. Rural dial-a-ride, on the other hand, ridership is quite down. Areas that we were serving in Prineville and Redmond, they're just not making those appointments as much as they used to. And we're still trying to figure out why, if they're just, they're still not going out like they used to pre-COVID. Rec services, on the other hand, back up to normal. We want to continue building on those models because we, we have a great relationship with all the rec services, and we tend to do great with, you know, reducing congestion in and around all the tourism that takes place here in Bend and other parts of central Oregon. So I think there's certain models that I think are going to do, bounce back, and others that we're going to have to reevaluate. And that's when we're looking towards potentially outsourcing. We took some of those STIF dollars and we made it to employer van pool through commuter options. They got a van pool out of Blackbeet Ranch this year. We're working on Facebook. So this is where CET shuttles may not make sense, van pools do. We're also looking at some of the routes here in Bend, whether more of a micro transit style, deviating on the route, makes more sense to gain ridership. So there is that moment where we're looking at all the different models on what makes sense to keep and what makes sense to maybe adjust because of COVID.
And I would also add too, so although, you know, COVID numbers have come down tremendously than last year, there is still a lot of COVID hesitancy, they call it, from the riders' perspective. So riders, you know, we, and I included kind of a ridership comparison for you guys in the, in the memo, just so you could kind of see what a huge difference in ridership we had from pre-COVID levels to now. We have seen a huge dip. And we were hoping, like, and maybe this is a good segue to the Route 31 discussion, so Route 31 connecting Lapine to Sun River, we did double our ridership this year, which was wonderful. But also, you know, the keeping in mind what those numbers were and what I believe they should have been in a non-COVID environment. This was a service that we launched during COVID, which I think was fairly ambitious, but the jobs were there, and we wanted to try to give folks a way to access those jobs in Sun River. And so for this year, we had just over 600 rides. In the broad sense of things, that's not really that great. But the reality is that this was the second year of a service. You're looking at three to four years to get any service off the ground regardless of what it is, because it takes people time, you know, to recognize that the service is available, how to use it, and make it a part of their daily commute. So we knew that there was going to be, you know, some challenges there. But, but the service in spite of COVID and also the Delta variant played a huge role in that last month of service. We had been doing a lot of really kind of like fun transit trips with the Lapine Senior Center that were really successful and a lot of fun. And a lot of other community organizations, like Partners in Care, were then, in the Lions Club, were then putting together their own transit trips. Like, there were grassroots transit trips going on from Lapine to Sun River, which was great. But then in the last month, we weren't really able to see what that fully could look like because of the Delta variant. And then any of the, you know, riders that we started to see using it, it just kind of put pause. So I'm very excited about the viability that Route 31 has. Clearly, there's a need, but we haven't really been able to fully test what that route can look like, because we haven't been able to test it not in a pandemic environment.
What about driving it up Day Road into Huntington instead of the highway?
Yeah, actually, I've had the team start to look at Day Road, because we're getting a lot of interest in that area. So there is a potential to reroute for next summer.
Because that, that, people can walk down the street and get on the bus there at the street corners.
Yeah.
That may be the opportunity.
But, you know, I just wanted to ask that question about COVID and then circle back to your original question, like, what's the, what's the point of all this? I mean.
Oh, so I was just asking about zero fee rides, you know, what's the big picture there? And you were proud to say that would be the goal. And then I'm wondering, is that really the goal? So that was, that's all I was really.
No, and I, you know, just to put that in perspective, the, what it costs to run a bus system versus what you can collect in fee, in fee revenue, I mean, that the fee revenue is not a, you know, maybe for the recreational routes, that's, that's a, you know, a good, a good source of revenue. But I mean, the fee revenue for the, you know, for the basic routes, is probably, it doesn't probably contribute that much.
Between 12 and 14% of the revenue hour for our regular services. We have a fare-box recovery of over 100% on our rec services.
Wow, okay. But, but what it does is it, it allows people to get to work, to their medical appointments, to shopping, you know, our community members. And it, and it means that there are not, are that many less cars on the road, which means a lot less congestion for the rest of us. And also.
I would advocate for a minimal fee as a service, so you respect it and enjoy the dollar that you provide, or the, whatever, a couple dollars, instead of, oh, that's one of those government services that we provide everybody that escalates in cost and then we have no recovery. I mean, I'm just, it's maybe a different view of the world, but just a minimal fee would be the goal, I think, so.
I will say, a good side effect of not collecting fares is our increase in on-time performance. So you're not having an individual talk to the driver and exchange either paper tickets or that, they just board. And so our load time goes from probably 60 seconds to 30 seconds. And that really matters on the, on the higher corridors like Third Street and Greenwood and Newport. So that's something that, that's improved since the collecting of fare.
My kid takes up a lot of that bus driver's time trying to fish all the quarters out of his pocket. And then he drops them on the floor, and he's going to pick them up and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let's not assume that, oh, it's better that we don't have a fare at the, at the entrance. I just, I don't assume that that's the goal, that's all. I'm just, there's a discussion there.
I also just wanted to add, so we have another big project that's looking to be implemented in summer 22, and this is the Redmond Deviated Flex Service. So this is going to be our first, basically, deviated flex. It's kind of a combination of fixed route service where you follow a regular schedule, and also dial-a-ride, where you have the flexibility to be picked up or dropped off from within three quarters of a mile of the route. So this will be our first kind of baby step towards full-blown fixed route service in city of Redmond. And we are at the 60% mark as far as the design of the route right now. And we, just to kind of give you an overview of the routes themselves, we'll have a northern route that will, a northwest route that will cover the Walmart Senior Center and the St. Charles Medical Campus. And so it will be, you know, operating and will crisscross or intersect with the southern route at the Redmond Hub. And that southern route will cover the Redmond Airport, COCC Consumer Cellular, which is one of the largest employers in the city of Redmond. And so we're really excited to get this service off the ground. And we've ordered the vehicles and are hoping to get the vehicles soon, but those haven't ordered. Another.
Can I just ask about the, how that works? So, I mean, does that, does that mean you are regularly traveling a fixed route, but you stop in different places along the way depending on what kind of calls you get? Or does that mean you're like, leaving the fixed route a little bit here, a little bit there to pick people up, or?
Yeah, so we have a certain number of deviations, we call them, that you can do throughout the day. And it's keeping in mind, you know, wanting to stay generally on that fixed route schedule, but there's extra time built in for people to be either picked up or dropped off. And so it's a really great way that we can provide service to a wider swath of people, because you're going to be getting, the folks who live within three quarters of a mile of the route will be eligible to, you know, be picked up and dropped off. And the only reason for that three-quarter of a mile kind of max geographic areas, because obviously, like, we won't be able to stay on a fixed service if we're deviating too far away from the route. So it's a really, the service that we, we already have tested this model, it is the Route 20 that connects Warm Springs and Madras. That service operates on a deviated flex model. So we're able to pick people off and drop them off. And without there actually being a dedicated dial-a-ride service within Warm Springs, this allows us to provide that extra aid. this allows us to provide that extra ADA, it's just an extra kind of ADA accessible option for picking older adults, those who experience disabilities, we're able to reach them, and we wouldn't otherwise with a full-blown, full-blown fixed route service.
So, Ashley, what about the Warm Springs to Government Camp? Has that actually been implemented? I think it was, you know, for people that were working there?
Yes, so we will be starting that service in mid-December. We're still waiting on the vehicle to arrive that was dedicated to that service. But even if we don't get that service, that vehicle before mid-December, we'll have another vehicle that we'll be able to, to use in lieu of the dedicated bus.
Okay, is that going to run like every day?
We're still working out the specifics for the service planning, but it's looking like it's going to be going up once in the morning and then coming back in the evening following the kind of major work shifts for the folks that are up there.
Okay, great.
It's a really, you know, it's, it's a great service and we're really excited to implement it, but it is a challenging one for us to actually, you know, get going simply because it's like 60 miles one way that we're going, you know, to get from, to get from Government Camp, or get from Warm Springs to Government Camp. But we will get that service off the ground in mid-December.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, and right now, we have the funding for it to, to run it through mid-March, but we are looking for additional funds. I've applied for some grant funding to try to extend the days of service, because the season, like, they, they may be finished for the season in mid-March, but there are a lot of folks who still work up there in the off-season prepping for summer. So if we can, you know, we're looking for creative ways to fill that gap in days of service.
Good.
Yeah, and I guess maybe one last rural update as far as our demand response services is that we did also launch the new Sisters Shopper Shuttle, and that was launched in January of 2021. This is a really great service that operates, again, kind of like a dial-a-ride service, where on Thursdays, we go into the city of Sisters and pick people up within our dial-a-ride service area, and then we take them to three different major shopping destinations in Bend. Again, another one of those services that I think has a ton of viability and potential, but hasn't been able to be tested in a non-COVID environment. I'm really excited, I'm working on the Sisters Visionary Team. And so now I, I'm going to have, and our team will have a much more direct connection with the city of Sisters and, and the community there. So really hoping to not only encourage folks to use this service, but also just to, I think there's a lot of potential ridership for our dial, our traditional dial-a-ride and bus services in Sisters that hasn't really been utilized. So working on building that up and re-engaging the community for those services as well.
Good.
Wonderful.
Can I ask one other really big picture question? These STIF funds, how much of the total budget for CET do these make up?
I would say, to give you an idea, pre-2019, I think our operating budget for the Deschutes County area for CET was about 5.5 million. And STIF has made that about eight to nine million, so almost double.
Okay.
Yes, this is a very new funding source that is going to make transit, you know, better than it ever has been. So everybody's putting effort into, to using these funds.
Great, thank you.
So there's a bright future with a lot of ridership.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping. You know, I think the other thing that I'm poking around at is we are hoping to work with Smith Rock State Park as they have reached their parking limit. We're looking at potential shuttle operations so that they don't have to build out parking, and they can't, I don't think. So we're thinking about, again, another recreational service that will reduce congestion, decrease the need for parking. So I think that's another good opportunity on the horizon for us.
So when will you be able to implement that?
Well, I know it's written in their master plan, but it's been difficult to communicate with the park, but they know it's coming. So we're just talking to various outlets there in Redmond and Terrebonne of where we can potentially have a parking site...
Yeah.
And then shuttle in.
That would be great for that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Because we've actually tried to, we, actually, when we updated it, it was documents from 1993.
Wow.
Hard copy documents. So, you know, I haven't really, you know, haven't heard too many complaints from the neighborhood lately, but I know, you know, it was a serious problem earlier. But definitely having a bus route come in would be, you know, wonderful for that community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Okay, item number two, discussion regarding administrative limited duration, regular duration audit position.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. A little bit of an update and an ask for the board. So I was approved for a, adding a performance auditor position in last budget and had opened up the recruitment in August, August 18th, and it's been open a little over, around 11 weeks with no real viable candidates. So I think that's probably because of the labor market right now, the specifics of the recruitment being a fairly professional career-oriented position, and also probably the fact that the limited duration aspect of it was added by the Budget Committee. So what I'm asking for is, is some maybe help in removing that limited duration, going to a regular duration. The board and the Budget Committee still have ability to, you know, change that FTE later on in the budget cycle. So again, I, I think, you know, if I'm going to try to make this recruitment happen, I think I really need everything I can to make, make it work. So I'm not getting, you know, career-minded, even internal recruit, internal applicants with that limited duration flag on it. So any questions, concerns I can address?
So when we say regular duration, we're talking about a permanent FTE in the audit office?
Correct.
And then, yeah, the, the authority of the Budget Committee or the Commission is to remove that someday or whatever. I mean, because you were saying there, there still is authority there, but it would be an FTE, it'd be a permanent position, so that'd be more of a, a larger decision to reduce that position.
Perhaps, yeah. I mean, again, it, it makes it a viable position to fill. The regular position does come with it, you know, a little, probably a little more burden to, if you're trying to downsize and a person's in there, then there's a little bit of more of a impact to it. So, but again, I think it's, it's one of those things where I think it's necessary at this time if, if we want to move forward with, with giving me that additional assistance.
So Dave, do you think that the person that could apply for this job could help with the transition when you decide to retire? I mean, are we, would we possibly find someone that would have the qualifications that you have that could step into your job, do you think? Is there a chance?
I'd say, you know, fir, first thing, I was trying to look for a person that probably could do the work. The question is, is whether they could step up to the, the position of County Internal Auditor someday. Again, it'd be my hopes that we get a, a really talented applicant that can rise to that level and take, take that on. I do not know what the, what the future will bring, you know? I think it, it is a tough position to be a kind of a one-person audit shop or even a, you know, a two-person audit shop. So again, you, you're really trying to get a lot of skills and talent out of one person to really run the, a series of audits across the broad spectrum of county departments we have. So, you know, again, that's kind of why I want to get a person on, so I can start kind of building some, some backbone to the audit process here. So, so that, you know, when I'm, when I'm not here, somebody else can, can pick up the, pick up the, the stuff and keep going.
Now, the gentleman that was working with you in the past, he's no longer doing a part-time basis?
Yeah, he was on call and he was a retired CPA, had worked with, uh, Lane County, I believe. And he just, he had other commitments. He was retired and he wanted to go back to being retired essentially, so.
Going to go back to fishing? Okay.
Yeah.
And golfing.
Yes, golfing, don't forget golfing.
Can I, can I ask about, I'm, I'm curious about costs. So when we have someone in a limited duration position, the, the salary, the benefits, you know, all of that is, is the same as when they're, when they're in a regular position. It's just that there's the perceived, you know, firmness of the position, you know, moving forward into the next year and, and, and the next year. So it's, it's not a, we're not talking about, we're not talking about on an annual basis a, a change in cost. We are talking about just kind of a, a higher degree of commitment on our part.
I, I'd say that's a good summation. It's a commitment, it's, it's a little bit of, the cost doesn't change, but the, the direction of having somebody who's, who's career-minded, who thinks they're going to stay in that position for a longer period of time. We all know that the housing market's kind of a tough one, the labor market's kind of a tough one. I mean, I think, you know, again, we want somebody who wants to invest their time and efforts into being a good auditor here for the county. And so I kind of really, you know, again, I think, I think we need that, and we need a little bit of commitment to that person that, yeah, we're, we're not just going to start and stop. You know, granted, we want to reevaluate, we can look at it in the budget cycle, we can do all those things. But I, I think, I think a commitment would be good.
Is there any other audit activity happening in central Oregon from local governments that, you know, who else has an audit shop or audit services? Or these are all external relative to our one internal position?
Probably through contracts, like, external, but I, I don't hear, there's no other internal auditors on this side of the mountains.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was...
I do deal a lot with Jackson County, they have three auditors there, Jackson County, Washington County is growing, Clackamas County is growing. That's probably another thing is that, you know, a lot of those jurisdictions that are more in the valley have more access to other people who are at least geographically located auditors, you know? I mean, whether it's the state or the, or some of the private sector auditors. We have much less here. I think St. Charles has an auditor. There's not too many other auditors on staff, even for some of the private sector employers. So... So what I'm looking for is kind of a resolution that would convert that, that one limited duration FTE to a regular duration FTE.
This is the discussion in preparation for Wednesday, is that where we're at?
Correct, I think the, the resolution would be brought forward on Wednesday, so we're just looking for...
Confirming that, yeah.
Some, something up to basically that, that you'd feel comfortable being brought forward on consent.
I, I'm supportive of trying this approach. I, I hope that this would actually make the difference and, but if, you know, you offer this as a regular, as a regular duration position and we're still having a hard time trying to recruit someone, then, you know, it'll just point back to all of the human resource issues that the county is facing broadly and that the community is facing, I, I think.
Right.
And I'm, I'm supportive of it, Dave, because I know it's critical just for transitioning and, you know, the breadth of, you know, knowledge you have of the county is so important that you share it. So I'm, I'm hoping that this would make the difference, but hearing what's happening in our community, it's definitely, people are not going back to work for other jobs. So let's hope, have Whitney do some pictures for you on the next release, because the picture she used for our administrator job...
Marketing.
Yes, Whitney, she did such a fabulous job. And surely someone wants to come here and go play golf and ski in the winter, besides work. Don't you think, Whitney, you could do that? Yes.
If they can afford to live here.
Yes.
Well, and then, are you going to share your office with this next auditor? Or we're going to build you a suite somewhere?
I, I'm not exactly sure. We had a space, but it's...
That's for the administrator to determine, huh?
Competing things, so.
I know.
I'll leave that up to Nick.
Yeah, well, yeah, so there's support to, yeah, move this forward. Let's be the best darn audit shop in, in Eastern Oregon at least, right? No, I joke. Thank you very much for what you do, though. I mean, it's great to have that professional reference point for all the business of the county.
Appreciate the support.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you, Dave.
Okay, item number three, department performance measure updates.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. Today, we have Q1 performance measure updates from departments for you. And for anyone who, who may be watching this item, the board sets goals for the county each year and objectives, and then departments develop performance measures to help and meet those board goals. And so each quarter, we come to the board with updates from departments to give you a snapshot of progress that's being made on implementation. This year, we're trying something new and welcome your feedback on that. And that is, in the past, each quarter has featured a variety of performance measures that span multiple goals and objectives. This year, at least for this quarter, we are bringing you performance measures that all fall under the board's goal of safe communities. So we have four broad goals, and our plan is each quarter, we will feature a different goal, kind of provide a nice snapshot of the work that's being done to meet that goal and those objectives that fall underneath it. So today, we will hear from a variety of departments. And first up, we're going to hear from the District Attorney's Office. I see Ashley on Zoom. Ashley's going to provide us an update related to the Victims Assistance Program. And Ashley, I'll let you go ahead and introduce your measure and your progress so far this fiscal year.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Ashley Beatty, the Program Manager of the Victims Assistance Program. My performance measure is specifically around feedback from victims who are experiencing the criminal justice system. The victim, they specifically are provided three questions at the completion, so they being victims. So they're provided a survey with three questions at the end of their experience in the criminal justice system. One of them, and the one I'm going to report on today, is the Victims Assistance Program provided me with services that helped me make informed choices about my situation. And in this past quarter, we provided this survey to 174 victim individuals who had experienced that criminal justice system. We had a return rate of 23.5%, which is pretty darn good. And we all get a ton of surveys and sometimes tend to delete them just because we get a little survey fatigue. But we offer this survey in a variety of fashions. We have either an advocate that was not the advocate on their case call and do the survey with the individual over the phone, or we offer this survey via mail or the website. And any that are sent via mail are provided postage paid, so there's no burden or barrier for the victim. And we had 98% of victims either agree or strongly agree that the services provided by the Victims Assistance Program helped them make informed choices about their situation. So really incredible positive feedback for this past quarter.
Great, congratulations.
So, Ashley, if I, if I was, if I tracked that correctly, 23% of the people you offered the survey responded, and within that, 98% responded positively.
Absolutely, you nailed it.
Great.
I do have some comments, if you guys are willing to listen to some of the comments, I feel like those really spoke to it. The updates and communications and explanations I received were so appreciative. I've never had anything like this happen to me, so I would have been lost if it was not for the Victims Assistance Program. Just, you know, shout-outs to specific advocates. You guys followed up, I think you're doing a great job. They're great people, doing great jobs for the victims of Deschutes County. There was a bit of a safety concern in the beginning of the proceeding, and VAP allowed me to come into the office and watch the proceeding with the advocate on our personal computer, so I didn't have to be in the courtroom or on video and feel unsafe. That was really special to me. And so I just feel like, you know, this, this past quarter, we had amazing positive responses. And then specifically, this wasn't somebody that gave a survey, but something I wanted to follow up is you guys had asked that the vacancy in my department be filled with bilingual advocate, and we have done that. So we have a Spanish-speaking advocate as part of the team, and we received... a Spanish speaking advocate as part of the team. And we received, uh, feedback from a Spanish speaking victim survivor. She had said it was a privilege for her to get to speak in her own language when going through the system. So I just wanted to provide that feedback to you guys.
Great.
Great to hear those testimonials. Thank you.
So Ashley, is that Spanish speaking person, are they able to work full time then?
They are.
Okay, good. Um, did you make any phone calls? Cause 23% of the returned surveys, I mean, I know I get survey notices all the time and I'm probably one of the 75% that doesn't fill out because I think, how important is this? But did you call any of those? Do you ever call anybody else that hasn't, you know, returned it just to know for an additional? Because that's only a quarter of your surveys.
Um, that's a pretty high return rate. And then no, because we want the surveys to be anonymous.
Okay.
So that they can give valid, sometimes really candid, maybe negative feedback about their experience. Um, I wouldn't have a mechanism for following up. Um, otherwise it wouldn't be anonymous and then they may not feel safe giving that feedback.
Thank you for that explanation.
98%. The 98% I think is important because if there were people among the, if there were people who received the survey who were unhappy or had very, you know, um, negative or constructive feedback to give, I'm pretty sure that they would, they would give it.
And, and being completely candid, it's not unusual to receive, you know, one or two disagrees in a quarter. Um, a lot of times it's more, they will confuse the Victims Assistance Program as the criminal justice system in whole. And they'll say things like, um, you know, I really hated the outcome of my case or things like that. So that's not uncommon for us to receive. Um, this was just a, an amazing quarter and I feel like we're doing darn good work.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Thank you, Ashley. Um, next up, we're going to hear from Facilities Director Lee Randall. Lee is going to provide an update on the Public Safety Campus Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Lee Randall, for the record. Um, so to provide a, a little background, we're also responding to, uh, safe communities. And our measure was to partner with department stakeholders to implement, uh, the three remaining components of the Public Safety Campus Master Plan. And to provide some context, the Public Safety Campus is a 28, 28 acre site on the north side of Bend that is home to the sheriff's office and the adult jail, um, the Community Justice Department, which includes juvenile detention, adult parole and probation, and the community service shop, and then 911 dispatch, Oregon State Police, the Deschutes Recovery Center, the Deschutes County Stabilization Center, and most recently the Veterans Village. In 2018, the master plan was developed in conjunction with establishing the stabilization center. And we identified, uh, really four near-term projects, uh, that had a few subcomponents. Um, the stabilization center, which is up and running, uh, the community service shop was just recently completed. And then, uh, the adult parole and probation expansion. And so, uh, in terms of providing an update, uh, to where we are currently, the, uh, adult parole and probation expansion, we expect that, uh, we will be submitting for permits, uh, for that project, uh, this week. Um, the design phase is nearly complete and we do have a construction manager, general contractor on board already for that project. And they have been working with the design team in conjunction with developing, uh, the specific, uh, construction methods, uh, for that project. Um, and then secondly, uh, parking expansion. Um, so the projects that remain are related to, um, increase in parking, partly related to some parking, uh, capacity that will be displaced due to the adult parole and probation expansion. And so we had identified as part of the 2018 master plan, a couple of areas to expand parking. Uh, we're currently, uh, beginning the design project, uh, process on those remaining parking projects. And as we get through design, we'll, um, analyze and assess the feasibility of those projects. They are conceptual at this time, um, but we're beginning, uh, the design on those. Uh, in terms of moving forward, um, we are, uh, developing an RFP for updating the master plan, uh, and for schematic design for sheriff's office projects. So both of those were identified in the FY 2022 budget. Uh, the sheriff's office has set aside funds for developing schematic design, uh, for projects that were identified during the master plan in 2018, uh, related to the jail and to the sheriff's office administration. And then, uh, on the facility side, uh, we will be working to update the 2018 plan, working again with all of the stakeholders and identified, uh, to identify shared needs, um, and then opportunities for addressing those needs and meeting the growth of the county specifically as it relates to the public safety campus. Um, the next step that, uh, the board will see, uh, expect in the next six to eight weeks, uh, will be a contract for a design team to lead the update of the master plan and also to develop schematic design for the sheriff's office projects. So I expect that we will be back with you in six to eight weeks and provide an update and provide a recommendation for a design team to lead those projects. That's the update that I have and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Lee, do you have any idea what inflation is doing to construction costs at this moment in time? I mean, I know lumber went way up. Has it come back down? Um, I don't know how much lumber we're talking about in our many projects, but is it still escalating like it had been, let's say, six months ago?
Um, certain, we get regular reports from a variety of sources on costs. And, um, as you mentioned, lumber is kind of the bright spot. Uh, supply has increased and prices have come down. Um, some of the other components continue to increase. Um, as energy costs increase, for instance, uh, a lot of, um, products require energy and those costs are paced, passed along. Steel continues to increase, uh, in pricing. And for us on commercial projects, um, there is typically quite a bit of lumber involved, but as a percentage of the overall cost, it's typically lower, uh, than on residential projects. So we are continuing to see costs increase kind of in the neighborhood of 68% per year. But within that, there are categories that are either up to, are increasing at a higher percentage or may be remaining somewhat flat. Um, and steel is one of those components that continues to increase at a higher rate.
I'm curious, as, uh, I'm trying to remember exactly how the, how the, the PMP expansion relates to the, to the modular building. Will, will that modular building not be needed after the PMP expansion is, is completed? Or is, is that serving other purposes for community justice broadly that will continue to be there?
So it will no longer be needed. And in fact, um, to their credit, Community Justice has done a great job of helping us to find alternative work areas for their folks who had been in the modular buildings. So, uh, we've been able to remove those buildings and take them off rent, uh, in order to recognize some savings. So, um, in the short term, we've been, they've been able to do a variety of things. It by no means meets, um, any of the needs long-term, but in the very short term, they've really, uh, come together and people are in some temporary quarters, uh, which have allowed us to, to save some costs on the modular buildings. So, uh, the Community Justice Team's done a great job, um, in accommodating that.
So the modular building is gone?
Yes. So we've, we've removed those. We're saving on rent and that's an area that is slated for, uh, parking expansion, um, in order to accommodate the parking that's lost, um, at, uh, the shared work center and adult PMP building. Um, there's some parking there that had been allocated to the sheriff's office. And so we're working to add parking for the sheriff's office.
Thanks.
I didn't know that, uh,
Haven't been over there in a while, I guess.
Well, yeah, I've been close to it. I didn't know that building was gone. That's great.
It's fairly recent. I, um, honestly, the exact date of it being pulled off isn't, uh, at the forefront of my mind, but I would say in the last, uh, six weeks or so, um, six to eight weeks. Um, and I'm sure someone listening could probably correct me on that, but it has been very fairly recent.
Do we still, do we own that? Or did we, were we leasing it?
We were leasing those. And so, um, and originally we, we'd set them, um, specifically while stabilization was under construction, when, when the PMP folks, um, were displaced in anticipation of an expansion. Um, and then, you know, a lot has happened with remote work and, uh, and the pandemic. Um, and also, um, like I said, uh, Community Justice and the PMP folks have really come together with some innovative solutions for the short term. Not ones that will necessarily, that won't, or they're not solutions that will work long-term for PMP, but in the short term, um, in order to, to help out the cost of the project, they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Well, great update. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Natalie Harris. Our Crisis Services, uh, Program Manager, come up next. The next three updates that the board will receive fall under the objective of reducing crime and recidivism through prevention, intervention, supervision, and enforcement. So Holly has two of the first updates, um, under this objective. And I'll go ahead and let Holly introduce those.
Hi, Holly Harris, Program Manager, Crisis Services. Nice to be with you. Um, so the first metric is around our forensic diversion program, um, which has been around about five years. And the metric is to reduce the recidivism of the individuals served in that program by 60%. Um, and if you remember, this was actually changed in, I believe it was in the budget process where historically our goal had been 20%, um, but we had been far exceeding that for so many years that, uh, we agreed to raise it to 60% to challenge ourselves even more. So I'm happy to report that we have, uh, reduced the recidivism this quarter by 61%. And I really have to just say, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty incredible number for this population that we're serving. This is a very, very acute population that often comes to the attention of law enforcement and ends up in our criminal justice system. Um, and this program is primarily made up of peer support specialists, so individuals with their own lived experience, um, with this, um, type of situation, as well as case managers who really help get people set up with entitlements, food boxes, basic needs, types of services. And so by wrapping around this population intensely, sometimes daily, multiple times a day if needed, um, to be that support for the individual as we work to get them engaged in services has clearly shown to be effective. And this was actually a grant that we applied for to create that program through the Oregon Health Authority that ultimately became ongoing funding through the Health Authority. So this is no longer a grant program. It's sustained funding through the Health Authority.
And it's, it's showing success, which is the good part. And that's going to be good for everybody, just like you're saying, the whole system, keeping a close eye and supporting people very specifically, uh, so they don't fall back into some of the traps. And I, I can see it. Sometimes it's a cycle. If you don't, if you just got to interrupt it, right? You know, it's like, well, let's not go down the same path that we did last month or whatever the timeframe is.
Exactly. And, and the individuals with lived experience can really demonstrate to the people they're helping that it can work, that recovery is possible, um, that they've lived it, they've done it, and they can share their experience, which is incredibly valuable. And this program is integrated into the stabilization center. So it's one part of the overall crisis services that are offered out of that building and has been really effective.
So we'll see less utilization at the stabilization center because it's working so well?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm not going to make any promises.
Well, let's start with the emergency, emergency room and the jail first and then go for that one, right?
Right. So any other questions on that metric? Okay. My next one is related to the pilot program that we are working on. Um, this is related to having our mobile crisis team respond to certain calls without the presence of law enforcement with them. So the, the metric was to develop a protocol for responding to calls without law enforcement. And in collaboration with our 911 partners, um, we have developed a protocol, um, and we vetted that protocol through our key stakeholders, through our Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee, which is comprised of all the law enforcement agencies, um, our DA's office, probation and parole, all the, all the key players in this type of work, um, and are also our, uh, NAMI, uh, partners with lived experience, um, to support our efforts with this. So we've developed the protocol, but the hang up right now, staffing. Um, this protocol was developed on utilizing our mobile team when it's fully staffed. Um, we are still at about, um, we're missing about 30% of that team still. So as soon as we're able to get that team fully staffed, we should be able to start piloting this. I would love to say we could get there this year, but I can't say that for sure. Um, you know, we'll just have to see how, if some of our efforts, uh, towards recruitment and retention, um, hold, hold strong. Um, and if they do, hopefully we can have that team fully staffed and start to dip our toe into the water. We have, the protocol does allow for, um, responding to suit, what we call suicidal subject calls. So these are, um, and we have criteria around that. Um, but it is sort of, that's sort of our, the, the lower hanging fruit of what we knew we could respond to without law enforcement and do it safely. Um, what it requires is two people to respond. We would never send one person out to respond to one of these calls. That wouldn't be safe. So we need two people, which then of course obviously means, you know, more staffing than even our base staffing. So, um, that's just our challenge right now. We are not going to let it slow us down though. We want to continue to try to move this effort forward despite the challenges ahead of us. Um, so we are, our sheriff's office partners have secured us some radios. So we are going to be connected to the CAD system or into the radio system, um, 911. It's graciously agreed to start training our existing mobile team staff on the use of these radios. And so we'll go ahead and start working within the radio system, um, to help at least release officers from the scene sooner than we've been able to in the past because now we're connected to the radio system. So we'll start with that until we can get fully staffed and fully implement the project.
So Holly, have you been able to hire anyone?
We have. Yeah. The, the day we implemented our signing bonuses, we got two applications for night shift. So it, I don't know if it's because of it, but here was interesting timing. Um, and so we actually are seeing a slight improvement and heading in the right direction. We are seeing applications. We did recently just hire two MCATs. So, so we're, I think, I think we're heading in the right direction. It's not as fast as I like to move, um, but it's, it's heading in the right direction.
So when you say within the year, do you mean within the calendar year or with our fix, or within our fiscal year of next June 30th, that you hope we're at 100%?
Well, on our MCAT, we won't, we won't be at 100% for crisis services because we have a ways to go with the rest of the, the crew at the stabilization center. Um, but I, I'm, I'm optimistic and I will like to think that we might be able to get, um, another MCAT or two by the end of this calendar year, but we'll see. I, I, that's maybe
Only like 60 days, right? Christmas and Thanksgiving, so.
Right.
So until you reach that level of staffing, the, the MCAT, uh, team members that you have will continue to do co responding type work?
Correct. Yeah. We, we are just really trying to just do our core basic services and this is kind of an add-on. Um, and so we really just can't do the add-on until we've got a, a stable staffed team.
Understood. Yeah, makes sense.
I was act, I was actually at COVO this morning talking to JW and Kathy and, you know, we're losing more veterans now than we were. And they told me, then, you know, some, a gentleman who had taken his own life. And I just, you know, I just want, um, thank goodness we're going to, with our two additional judges next year, we'll be able to implement that veterans court, which, you know, the bill passed a couple of years ago, but we didn't have truly the total capacity. So I'm hoping that all this together will, um, you know, help a lot of our population. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, we, veterans are definitely on our radar. Um, about 5% of the people we're serving in the stabilization center identify as veterans, though I suspect it's higher than that. It just not, hasn't been reported or collected. Um, our co responder program where we have the clinician embedded at the Bend Police Department, um, we have a specific target around veterans that we're looking to, to enhance those numbers because we know they're a vulnerable population and they've served our country. We want to serve them.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Community Justice, uh, Business Manager, DV Holcomb, will provide our next update and the final update under this objective. Um, she's going to talk about cognitive behavioral health group participant skill reporting. So let DV explain to us what that means.
Thanks, Whitney. For the record, DV Holcomb, Community Justice. Uh, it's nice to be with you all. Thanks for, uh, this lovely technology of Zoom, which allowed me to stay here and take care of a couple of things. And also maybe show a couple of quick slides. So I'm going to do a quick, uh, share. All right. So, um, yeah, our performance metric that we are reporting on today is the percentage of our cognitive behavioral group participants who report skill acquisition. Um, this is done through, uh, Survey Monkey or a Google survey that we provide to both young men in our juvenile, uh, division and to adult older men, uh, in our parole and probation division. So MRT is the one cognitive behavioral group that we have right now, also due to some staffing issues and some other issues. We offer this group at the moment via Zoom, which has been, um, surprisingly successful as it manages to actually remove several barriers to participation that we have historically seen with our population. So MRT, Moral Recognition Treatment, is a group, a kind of a 12-step, it's based on the 12-step, uh, group model. And it's an opportunity for, uh, participants to examine what they believe, what they think, and the effect that their thinking has on their life. And that's that cognitive, uh, the word cognitive. So on the So on the juvenile community justice side, quick, if you're a visual person, this is kind of the, the question, this program was useful to me. We kind of check if the person says strongly agree or agree, they kind of get in the yes column, so you can see that we've actually had 100% agreeing, or strongly agreeing that the program was useful. And those quotes down at the bottom are some things that folks added, it's kind of like how Ashley shared, sometimes what folks are saying is, kind of feels more meaningful as far as the impact that we're having. So for example, these are young, young men saying, you know, what was important to them was when they had to lay down their goals at one year, five years, and 10. And you can see that second one, what was important to this young man was planning out my life from one year, five year, 10 years from now. And then finally, a final quote, I like this, meaning MRT, it can make people be more self-aware of their tendencies if they give it a chance. Just kind of some quotes of the kind of activities and the, and the kind of impact that the program can have. And then finally, adult pro-imploration, this is my last slide there, the, the metric that we're looking at there to get to our overall metric is, did you learn one or more skills? And the example here is, for example, goal setting, which is kind of reminiscent of what I just said on the juvenile side, as well as time management. And you can see there we have 100% saying yes. In terms of what was useful to adults in MRT during this quarter, sharing and listening to other people, that's part of the magic of group treatment as opposed to just individual treatment. And then the second quote there, repairing damaged relationships and the moral assessment was very helpful. Those are two very specific exercises or steps in the MRT program. And then finally, a gentleman shared that, I'm not the only one with the problems I had, but it is our choice and actions in what we decide to overcome such problems. And that is it. This is a wonderful program, we're offering four models of this weekly for clients, as I said, over Zoom, but it's been kind of a longstanding pro-imploration and juvenile intervention over the last five or 10 years, very successful one. And that's it. I'd love to take your questions if you got any.
Looks like everybody that participates is really getting something out of it, so not, no negative feedback. But is this offered to kind of a predisposed subset of people that are ready for it? Is that kind of probably the concept, too?
That's such a great question, thank you Commissioner. Actually, no. Most of the, most of the time, when young men and the folks, adults, are referred or ordered to come into this program, they're a little bit hesitant or resistant. And we, you know, we, we do struggle with engagement with that population, so not everybody does extremely well. I think our engagement, our successful completion rate is around 60%. So these are medium and high-risk individuals. A lot of folks go through it a second time, and maybe as you heard me say, or you saw, you know, a moral assessment, I mean, this program really asks, it holds up a mirror, and it really does not allow the client to kind of scoot away and deny things that are going on in their lives that are causing the problems that they're experiencing. It puts a lot of emphasis on personal responsibility, and kind of, the, the key phrase is, how do you live justly in an unjust world? So it's very, it's very rigorous, it's tough, and it is not for everybody at the beginning, especially. So, great question, thank you.
When I was, I participated, I don't know if you remember, years ago in a one-day, it was a cognitive therapy course, so I did attend, you know, with, with folks that were there. So that put me on the straight path, right, as soon as I got started being a Commissioner.
You're a success story.
Okay.
Successful moral recognition.
Yeah, it worked, it worked, yeah. But it was very enlightening, though. I was in, you know, the room, really seeing the process and, you know, kind of feeling the, the emotions and the, the tensions around the room, too. Each person does struggle with, you know, this information about what, what am I doing for myself, or in, in the community also.
Yeah, indeed.
I'm just curious, what age are we talking about when you say young men? Is it up to age 30? You know, what are, what, what is the air, the range?
Yeah, so there's a juvenile curriculum, and then there's an adult curriculum. So we start working with juvenile young men who are, in general, we don't go below 14 with this particular curriculum. I mean, you can imagine, when you're asking about taking moral assessment of your character and of your choices and of your actions, and asking you to look back five and 10 years, it's tougher for those younger kiddos. So in the juvenile side, we start with 14, and then on the adult side, it's just slightly different curriculum, it's the same basic model, but it is slightly different, that can go up to 100. So it's a kind of a, not quite cradle to grave, but you know, elementary school, school bus, late school bus to grave.
Late school bus phase. Any other questions?
No, thank you. We really need to hear about, about how, how these programs help people build awareness and skills.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come and share a little bit about it.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final performance measure update for today falls under the board's objective of collaboration with partners to prepare for and respond to emergencies, natural hazards, and disasters. And we have 911 Operations Manager, Chris Perry, with us, and we also have 911 Director, Sarah Crossright, with us on Zoom today. They're going to provide an update on our number of registered Everbridge subscribers, which the public may know more commonly as our Deschutes Alert System. So they're going to talk a little bit about how that system is used and the progress we've seen in terms of the number of people that are signing up to receive alerts.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Perry, Operations Manager for Deschutes County 911. I'm providing you an update today on our successes with increasing our Deschutes Alert subscribers in Deschutes County. As you know, 911, in collaboration with the State of Oregon, maintains an emergency alert and warning system provided by Everbridge, which we refer to as Deschutes Alerts. And 911 staff, at the directive of our police and fire partners, send out citizen notifications regarding emergency incidents in our community. Examples of some of those types of incidents can be fire in general, though most commonly wildfire in our community, as well as hazardous materials incidents, law enforcement activity that could potentially endanger the public safety, as well as local missing and endangered subjects, as more of a be on the lookout for type of notification. So in Q1 this year, we had 8,559 new registrations, and that brings our total registrations to date to just over 41,000. And we typically see between 1,000 and 2,000 new registrations in each quarter outside of Q1 during the summertime, July or September. Last Q1, summer of 2020, we saw an even bigger number of registrations totaling 12,300 or so. As you know, we had significant fires throughout the state last summer, which most likely resulted in some heightened awareness of emergency notifications and, and subsequent new citizen registrations. So this year seems to be the same uptick in registrations during the fire season. And so, good news all around for more people signing up. Deschutes County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Team, 911, and county administration, as well as all of our police and fire partners, have been working diligently to use our social media and public outreach platforms to encourage citizens to sign up whenever we can. The Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Team, just most recently, has been using the Deschutes Alert System to reach out to smaller targeted groups, most recently to those citizens that indicated in their registration process that they have an access or functional need, to encourage those citizens to update their account information, so we have the most accurate address and contact information on file to help them in an emergency. So we're doing well, we're moving in the right direction, getting people signed up, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them for me.
Think back of, you know, when I was a kid, you'd hear a TV or a radio notification about a weather alert or something like that, and this is whole, very much the next generation of this, you know, individual devices, direct notifications, and, you know, the different topics could be really diverse at this point in time. So it's interesting seeing it evolve.
So it sounds like fire season really strongly drives sign, sign-ups. I'm curious, during, like, the winter, do we, did, did the sign, the sign-ups, the subscriptions really taper off dramatically, or?
Yeah, they do. We usually get Q4, this year we had about 1,800, Q3 was about 1,300, and then about 700, Q2 of last year. So it definitely takes a dip. In the wintertime, though, we're still marketing that and through social media and any sort of in-person public events as we can, but awareness certainly goes up during fire season in our community.
Well, good, just good for us to understand what, what motivates people and, and make the most of it when people are motivated.
Commissioner, dear.
My question is, what is the max we could get if we really, I mean, are we talking 150,000 people really should be signed up for this, if we were really connected with the entire county?
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't know what the, the ratio is from adults to children, but that number sounds, that, that would be the goal, I agree.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, really, make it people's New Year's resolution or something, you know, it's real simple, just sign up for this, because you never know when you're going to need it. And it's, I know it's so important when, I found out, I wasn't really on it, wasn't I, Whitney? I, there was some kind of disconnect, and I wasn't on that system, I was on the other systems, I get every prescribed fire alert, but yes. So definitely, it's time for people to add it to their technology on their phone. So we'll keep searching for the perfect answer, right?
We will, and we'll continue to track this so that the board can see progress, as we hopefully continue to move these numbers. So keep this one steady in terms of a performance measure.
Yeah. So is the goal for next quarter, or no, that's not going to be the next quarter, another 40% is when? Yeah.
We'll have to, I think, we'll talk to Chris about kind of what that data looks like. He did a really great, as he talked about, kind of historical look back at seasonally what we see, and so I think we'll tailor, the next time we bring this up to, to the board, we'll put it in context of the previous kind of season of data.
How about doing a billboard? Have we ever done a billboard for it?
I don't believe we have, at least since I've been here. Chris, are you aware of any billboard efforts we may have?
Nope, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
You know how I love reading billboards?
With a big photo of Chris up there saying, please sign up.
We'll see what we can make happen, but no, that's a great suggestion, and we'll talk about that offline, ways we might be able to implement.
Okay. Well, if we have them, I mean, you know, it just would be something different.
Definitely.
I, I hope, I, I hope we don't have March fires again next year, but if we do, that might be a good thing to kind of be ready to act upon in terms of marketing.
And we have been trying to tailor, when we do have incidents, we will, we queue up that messaging because we know it's fresh in people's minds, but yeah, we will definitely think proactively about the ways we can have stuff off the shelf, ready to go.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris and Sarah.
And Commissioners, I just, this new format, I think, is really effective to, to combine these around a goal, and this is really to the credit of, not really, it completely did the credit of our Deputy County Administrator, Whitney Hale's suggestion. It really makes a lot of sense, and it ties it all together, and we'll look forward to the next goal in the next quarter.
Definitely welcome your feedback on ways we can tweak this process to make these more effective for the board, but it's great to see progress across departments, especially as it relates to a common goal in this case. So definitely can connect with the offline if you have thoughts or feedback on how we can improve the process.
This was a really neat way of presenting quarterly, quarterly progress, as opposed to just hopping around within that massive matrix.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
We'll see you in Q2, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number four, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. So we may bring this back twice this week, so this is Monday, kind of getting more content, information, and then, as I say, we're looking at the agenda, I don't know if we published it both times, but it's just getting the agenda out. We may be setting ourselves up for Wednesday, or we'll see where it goes today.
Isn't it on Wednesday?
It can be on Wednesday.
Yeah, so that's what I was acknowledging.
Sure, yeah. Everything's an option, right?
Yep.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Greg Mun for the record, I'm the CFO and Treasurer for the County, and today for item number 14 is one of our ongoing updates for the American Rescue Plan. And in terms of a little bit of background, we, just for those that are maybe tuning in for the first time, this is a process that's been ongoing, a periodic review of the allocation of about $38 million in ARPA, ARPA money, that's come down from the federal government back in March. And our last update was on October 20th, and at that meeting, the, the board asked us to come back with a presentation from the 1017 Project, to hear, to have an opportunity to hear their presentation and for Q and A sessions. So with, today here with us is Holly McLean and her sidekick Dana Martin, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them, and then I'll come back after they're done.
Thank you very much for joining us. You got to see the first few agenda items today, so that was.
Aren't they lucky?
Good, yeah, good to be able to see the business of the county.
Thank you, Treasurer Mun. Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. For the record, I'm Holly McLean, I'm a board member of the 1017 Project.
Hi, and I'm Dana Martin, Board Member of 1017 Project. Good to be here, thank you for having me.
Good to see you, thank you.
As some of you may, may or may not know, the 1017 Project is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, whose mission is to provide a sustainable supply of high-quality beef to local food banks. Since 2014, we've donated over 134 tons of beef throughout central Oregon and beyond. Prior to COVID-19, fresh protein was a chronically absent item in most food banks and community kitchens, and that's what prompted ranchers in Powellbutte, Oregon to start the 1017 Project. We have maintained a herd of cattle in Powellbutte, and we operate with a board of seven volunteer board members, and we have four part-time employees that help us with the cattle and with the administration of distributing beef to 40 food banks, community kitchens, church food pantries, and schools, from Mitchell to Sisters, Warm Springs to Christmas Valley. So we're coming to you today because, over the course of the, since the beginning of the pandemic, our beef donations to specifically food banks in Deschutes County, but really everywhere, but in Deschutes County, our beef donations have increased 105%, and we would really like to continue, we don't see that, that amount of demand dropping anytime soon, particularly considering that central Oregon is really at its peak for the pandemic, and if economic disruption is likely to continue, we would like to continue providing that elevated sort of emergency level, if you will, amount of beef to the food banks. Our beef is processed in Prineville at a USDA butcher certified, and delivered directly to households from there each month. We, we schedule our butcher appointments two years in advance in order to get those butcher appointments with a USDA butcher. And so we're able to schedule everything from our hay, to when we need to obtain more cattle, to how we accept donated cattle from ranchers, based on sort of that two-year I think that sort of gives you a little bit, a little bit of information to go on, and if you have questions, Dana and I could certainly answer them.
So I had picked this out, kind of our list of requests and mentioning that, you know, this is a wonderful service, you know, the nonprofit and the service to the food banks, but also kind of that, that motivation to empower the USDA-certified meat processing, because it's another whole track of how do we keep that, keep or, or expand that processing capacity in Oregon. So that's why I pulled this one out, say, oh, let's discuss this. I think I know Commissioner Chang, you mentioned, well, what about the Food and Farm Alliance? And there's other requests out there. So that's, you know, let's figure out where, where we want to go with some of this.
I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about this, this proposal, the contribution to food security, and also just, you know, providing a little bit more market breadth and, and stability for local producers. And I'm all, I am also very interested in seeing the parallel proposal for, for produce come forward from the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance, so we'll be excited to support this proposal, and then we'll be looking for that other one soon.
Fantastic. And I'm just wondering, Holly, you have 21 Deschutes County organizations altogether, how many, you know, in County Warm Springs and Mitchell, how many other organizations are on top of the 21 we have in our county? We have 44, well, yeah, we have 44 throughout central Oregon, in Deschutes, Jefferson, and Crook County. And then we
And Widdler, wouldn't it be?
Pardon?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, that, just the 44 would be Deschutes, Crook, and Jefferson. But
Okay.
We do have more that go out. We've, for example, the Oregon Food Bank, we were able to deliver a large load of cat, of beef to them this last May. And so we have, and we have a couple over in the valley, too. But a lot of that is determined by their ability to come and pick up their beef from the food, from the butcher. So primarily, we started in central Oregon in, in sort of a, a small, it's sort of a microcosm of how we've established this, what we think is a replicable way of getting protein to food banks. We started it in central Oregon. It's been very successful here. We've also been able to replicate it in Texas and Arizona.
So are they gra, is it grass-fed beef then? Or is it actually finished on grain?
Uh, grass-fed.
Okay, it's all grass-fed then?
Yep.
No, I mean, it's great to know that you can get a healthy protein, beef protein for people that maybe otherwise couldn't afford it, and especially with inflation right now, the way it is. And you see the beef prices, and you know those prices are not going to the, to the ranchers. You know, there's that disconnect, truly. It's, it's only, I think it's only getting worse now.
Yes. One thing that makes us a little bit unique from, from other, from what beef the, some food banks might get from the grocery store, for example, is that our beef is, of course, fresh from the butcher. It's fresher than what you and I typically even get from the grocery store. And we also grind the entire carcass into hamburger, including the T-bone steaks. So you and I couldn't even buy that at Whole Foods. One of the comments we often get from our food banks is that the folks that are visiting the food banks are typically used to being last in line for everything. And when it comes to our beef, they're first. And they're getting some of the freshest beef available to them, and it's very high quality. So we like to think that this is a way of reimagining how food banks operate, to provide the dignity that, that our food insecure families deserve.
And, and localizing the whole thing. I mean, the beef you find in a, in a supermarket, you know, one package could be a mix of like
Yes.
40 animals from Nebraska, so.
Absolutely.
What about from Brazil?
Yeah.
Like, correct.
Yeah, that's
Since, yes, we never know where our beef is from sometimes.
So this is an update from one specific, you know, request. Do you, do, would you like to bring the Food and Farm Alliance request and put them side by side, or kind of do one, two, you know, because that's where we were at last time we talked about this?
I'm, I'm comfortable doing one, two.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I'm just making sure. So this is a, a request, and it was in the amount of, what, $50,000? Is that the, a supported amount from us also?
I made the motion the other day, which was not seconded for the 50,000.
There you go. So is that a motion for today?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
I'll repeat it.
I'll second.
We're getting there. So it's been moved in second. And is there any other discussion?
Do we want, would we like a comparable presentation from the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance? Or are, is, is just a written proposal enough, or?
Well, yeah, I, I tried to do a little outreach for that before this meeting, too, and I had asked Greg about it. So how about, how about we finish up this and then have that discussion real quick? So is there anything else on that topic? In the middle of a motion, calling for the vote, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So there we go. Congratulations. As I say, I really looking forward to, you know, supporting the whole system, local system, just like you mentioned. And the, and this will be the next one for other produce, but the, the meat system, the butchers, the, the distribution, the whole system.
Yeah. We look forward to being able to complement the nutritional value that the Food and Farm Alliance brings as well, so.
Well, and then there is effort at the state level for local inspection programs. So this, and I'm referring to the industry of the meat cutters at this point in time. So let's think about that, just putting direction to it for the long term. Because if we can get that next certified, even if it's not the same USDA type cert, you know, the federal certification, if there's a state program, maybe we can have more capacity there in the future also.
Absolutely.
Any comments, Dana?
Well, and thank you. We just really appreciate your support.
Great.
Excited about moving forward with this. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, High Desert Food and Farm Alliance, as in, so that's, you know, we probably want to have some good discussions, a little bit at least, because that would be, this is kind of one effort, you know, one group with bringing the cows and getting them through. And then this would be an organization, members or, or, you know, people that grow things that could go different ways. So I'm just thinking, who do we fund and how much? Right?
Well, I don't
Or do you just want to say it's a $50,000 fund for the rest of the story, too?
No.
Maybe we're done.
I, we've, I mean, I know that the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance sent in a, a proposal
But I was looking for that.
For their Give and Grow program. And I don't know whether it's gotten out to all of us yet. But it, that, that is in the mix. And, you know, I think it would be, it would, I think it'd be great for them to come in and talk about their Give and Grow program. I just wanted to, I didn't have a sense of how much time the, the full board wanted to dedicate to that.
Well, and that's was maybe, I don't know if they're available.
I can give you a quick update on
No, please do. Thank you.
So they did send in an original request. They've sent in a couple. Their last one was for $50,000. And we've been working back and forth with them to help put that into the format that's similar to what the 1017 Project did. In other words, what was, what are, what's the detail? What is the driving force behind the $50,000? And so that that can come to the board, so that you can make a decision on it. So I would expect that would be submitted within the next week.
Okay. So we'll just bring it back, and, and you're working, I'm getting the form.
Yep.
Great.
I have, I, I really feel badly in saying this, but I do think it's important that we all hear, a childcare location in Sun River is closing. And they're closing because they have no people, they're down to three people working. Three people. They can't run the facility. Forty-nine people are losing their childcare. No one is working. And, and then I just heard that one of those people told me that the state had actually given everybody in that public school a SNAP food card, two of, actually, two months worth $450 a month. And I'm just like going, there are so many things out there, but we definitely need people working. And, you know, I, I feel, we just lost almost 50 kids that lost their childcare because no one would apply for the job. And, you know, we just, we're funding millions of dollars for childcare. And who's going to do that work? Truly, who is going to do the work? And someone yesterday was saying, well, Patty, we've got free rent, and we can have free utilities. And, you know, truly, I do believe that having a job, I think it's really important to raise your children, but having a job is, you know, are we making it so easy that people really don't care about going back to work? I mean, it's, it's like, I think we're caught in that, that issue now. I, I just, I'm broke, I'm brokenhearted because that childcare is closing. That is a significant loss for that community. And they had a huge waiting list, but they didn't have anybody that wanted to work. And when you have something like that, you can't really, if you want to bring in parents, because that was, I called them, and I said, gee, could you bring in parents for like eight hours a day? You've got 50, you know, 49 parents, that could be two people a day. Well, no, you've got to do background checks and everything. So that was not an option for those people. But, you know.
I'm not 100% tracking here. Are you, are you concerned?
I'm just saying.
Are you concerned that nutritional assistance programs are preventing people from participating in the workforce?
I don't know. I mean, that's like, we're providing so many things in our, in our culture now that people are not going back to work. I mean, to think we lost babysitting for 50 kids is, is really pretty darn significant. It's something that that family had wanted to do. They had wanted to open that childcare up. That was like a lifelong dream. And yet they were down to three people. They just couldn't run it. And how, you know, we need to get people back to work, too. I mean, it's a balance. How do we get the balance?
I guess I would make the opposite argument that, you know, having, having nutritional assistance, having affordable housing, having subsidized public transit, these are the things that allow people to get to work. And I, you know, the, the amount of benefits that people receive through nutritional assistance, or, you know, housing vouchers and things like that, it is not enough to live just with that assistance alone. These are, these are the things that, that prop, prop working poor people up so that they can continue to do a job in a community where the cost of living is so expensive.
See, the state gave everybody, it didn't discriminate. If you do, if you're at that level where you need the help, it didn't discriminate. It gave everybody in that school the $450 a month for two months. And so
If, if you're at that level, and, and, you know, that level correlates pretty closely to a, a need for nutritional assistance. I mean, it's, you know, we, we had a discussion before, you know, like some months ago, about the extended unemployment benefits, and how, you know, cutting those off was going to send all those people back to work. And it has made very little difference. The, the, the challenge is that we have, you know, we have the, the percentage of our population that is working age compared to the total population is shrinking. You know, every day, you know, as the baby boomers retire out, and then we pile on these extreme, these extreme costs to, to just survive in our community here in central Oregon. And that is the reason why we are not, we are seeing so many people leave who, you know, who we need to do various jobs.
Well, the other thing
You can have, you can have somebody who bought their house for $200,000, you know, cash out, you know, somebody who was working in, you know, a restaurant or someplace like that. I think this is, Sherry Helt was just talking about this the other day.
Right. They sold their house for $800,000, and
They, they, they cashed out. They're not going to work in a restaurant anymore. They're leaving. Who bought their $800,000 house? Somebody who came with a job from somewhere else. And that's great. That brings more income into our community. But it, it means that, that the person who fits the bill to, to, you know, work that service sector job is gone. And, and, you know, that, that is the reason why we're seeing this incredible labor crunch in, in certain segments of our population, of our economy. It's not because of nutritional assistance programs.
Well, I know that my niece and her husband both work. They have excellent jobs in the healthcare field, and they are now getting hundreds of dollars every month for their children. Their CPA said it's almost impossible to opt out. It's, it is almost totally impossible to opt out of that money. And yet they know when they file their taxes next year, they're going to have to pay taxes on that money. So people are now getting that credit on a monthly basis. And so, you know, it's like, I mean, I worry that people, okay, you're going to owe taxes, you know, by getting that money now. So that's like an additional fund that's going into people's checking accounts. So there, there are all kinds of funds out there, and they all come together. And, you know, and truly, I know, Sherry said, the people that are buying their $800,000 houses are not going to be working at the restaurant. So they're shorthanded. They worked, what, is it over 100 days in a row? Yeah. I mean, you know, I see where the gas station's no longer open on Sundays because they can't find people. You know, it's happening everywhere in our community where we are really short-staffed.
And so that's why, that's why it's really important to understand what is, what is killing our workforce, and to work on the, on the issues that, work strategically and, and, you know, in a, you know, with urgency on the issues that will, will improve that situation. And we actually do have tremendous opportunities with the ARPA funds to, to, to do that. And I believe that we have done some of those things already. And, and I'm really glad that we have. And I hope that we can continue to do that.
The other side of the childcare, though, is the wages that were going to be paid were the SEIU jobs. So they're going to be paying, what is it, 25, $20 an hour? And that was also, they were going to be perhaps attracting the people that were working in Sun River, because they couldn't afford that wage. So, you know, it's
If you don't, if you want, if you want someone who does childcare to actually be able to live in this community without nutritional assistance, without a housing voucher, you know, without OHP, you actually need to pay them a living wage to do like a very important and demanding job. So, I mean, that's what, that's what underpaying people to do important jobs does. It basically, it, it makes, it may make labor affordable for a business, but it, society pays the costs in other ways.
So underpaying is all relative. I mean, if somebody's trying to cover costs and take out a basic profit relative to a set of incomes and expenses, I mean, don't, please don't blame somebody for underpaying. I mean, the whole economy is evolving.
I'm not blaming that specific business, but that, that specific business is paying the going rate. And the going rate is, in many sectors, not enough.
Well, yeah, everything's changing right now. This is a very dynamic time in the economy, and it's very disconcerting also. So, I mean, good discussion, if we want to.
Well, when you see the wages have gone up 4.4% this year, oh, and they haven't gone up for decades. So that is really good. But then you see inflation, and so you know that they're truly not getting ahead. It's, you know, it's, you know, just try and fill your tank up in today's, today's gas prices. So, yeah, I, it's incredibly difficult, and, you know, it's a, it's a real worry.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's keep talking about, let's keep talking about how we can use the ARPA funds to impact our labor shortages. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioners, in your packet, there's a graphic that's been added that should do a pretty good job of explaining where we're at so far. And you have a couple different ways to look at it, but one of the bottom graphic there, that's the pie graph, shows that we've committed about 60% of the funds, and about 40% are actually, 39% are, have not been committed yet. So it just kind of gives you an order of magnitude on where we are at.
Greg, I actually added an up at 23,578,000 for the upper graph. And we have, what, 38 million? So that's more than half.
More than half has been committed, correct?
Right.
About 60%.
Yeah.
And then on, beginning on the page after that, again, we have two lists. We have the eligible list, and the funding status of each of those line items. And it's dynamic as we learn more, and we have more submissions that'll be put on this list here for your consideration. You'll also get a copy of the proposals. And then the second list is all, are all of the requests. So I believe there's well over 100 that's been submitted, and whether or not they're eligible or not eligible, or yet to be determined. So that gives you the whole scope of everything. So at that, at this point, if there's any conversation about the eligible list, and anything we'd like to hear more about, or have questions about, or are ready to make a funding decision on?
So one of the concepts, just to start moving forward, is I do support the concept of sewer expansion. You know, there's a future discussion with City Redmond, and then also tunnels come to the table, which we heard that public testimony on. So we don't need to go anywhere today, but I'm just saying, let's bring that around, because those could be, you know, kind of bigger numbers, which could take percentages off of that pie chart if we get there. So I'm just advocating for that.
Looking at our childcare, weren't we trying to add like 550 new children spots? And I think, oh, my gosh, we just lost 50. You know, and we have, you know, we haven't spent a dime. And, you know, I just feel like, oh, my gosh. So now we really need to, to do 600, 600 spots.
I forwarded that, that information on to, you know, the Kelly Sparks specifically, and then, you know, the folks at Neighbor Impact, and the High Desert ESD. So everybody knows that that's happening there. So we're going to see if we can do something about it, especially with the funding commitment that was just
Well, I was hoping perhaps that Re Village could take their model down there, you know, where they actually have parents that are involved. And, and then they, you know, they have, it seems like they might be able to fit something there. Because they were going to Sisters Bend and Redmond. So why not add Sun River, too?
Well, the, a key, key component of the Re Village model, I mean, that the, the volunteer, you know, the, the, the parent sweat equity labor is great, but a key component of the Re Village
Revillage model is that they're, they're using public, you know, or not public, you know, institutional spaces that already exist that they don't really have to pay for. So I, I don't know what the, the Sun River situation is. But if that was a building that, if it's a commercial building that, you know, needs to, needs to pay rent or needs to pay a mortgage, it's, that's not necessarily a place where you can take that model to.
Well, perhaps they can pay more than the $350 that Revillage was charging. And it does have a month, it does have a lease. I do believe they have a term left on their lease. So, you know, to think you're going to lose your whole childcare, you know, it's, it's pretty frightening. Where do you go when we don't have, we don't have any?
So I mentioned sewer. And then another one is this, the whole affordable housing category. One of my thoughts is maybe we just come up with a simple formula, maybe by, so I'm referring to Habitat for Humanity, a formula, and I'm just throwing out ideas, for relative to population and just come up with something and, you know, kind of put out a number to each one of the organizations. Because Ben Redmond, Sisters in Lapine Habits, there's three of them there, I think, not four. But, you know, we could just put out a formula that, that gives them all resources. Because I'm sure any dollars are going to be good dollars that they can invest for Habitat for Humanity.
Well, for at least.
You mean staying with the 5.8 million and then allocating it?
Well, anything. You know, so as I say, I'd look at some, there's a $2 million request and a $200,000 request. And, you know, so we just come up with something.
If I can jump in real quick. So we are meeting, we've met with that group already once, and we're meeting again on Thursday, I believe, to have the secondary discussion with, and where we're leading with all of this is to come up with a proposal similar to how we did with childcare that can be presented to the board for your funding consideration. So just to let you know where that's, that process is going, I would hope that we could come back within, you know, within a month with some information for you.
So Greg, when will they be able to come back? Like next week on Wednesday or something?
I don't know that yet. We're meeting again later this week to, to continue that conversation. And then the hope would be, my hope would be, is that we could do it in somewhat of a timeframe similar to childcare. It's a different dynamic than childcare altogether. But to come back with a proposal for the board to, to consider.
I'm, I'm really glad that you're taking that coordinated approach and getting all those entities together. And I, I think that what Commissioner DeBois is suggesting might be a good additional kind of way to frame up there or, or analyze and, and frame up the, the requests that they ultimately come with is, is, you know, like what, how do you, how do you figure out what is geographically equitable, you know, for, in, in, in this, in this particular slice of, of ARPA allocation? I would say that we, we, we should think of the, we should think of the communities differently. In, in one sense, because we are all, you know, kind of on a separate track. We're, we're getting ready to turn around and, and contribute a substantial amount of land to the Lapine, Sun River Habitat for Humanity. And so I kind of feel like that should be counted against what their, you know, what, what their total, you know, proportion would be. Because these, these, you know, most of these other habitat proposals are basically to do that, to, to acquire land. So if we're directly giving land to Lapines, Sun River Habitat, and the others are asking for cash for land, you know, what, what, what we're contributing in land value should be kind of part of the, part of the equation or, or part of the way we look at things.
That's fine. That's an idea too.
But, but I do, I agree that like coming up with some kind of, some kind of way to like.
So my experience is.
To provide, provide assistance across, across the communities, but, but, you know, in a, in some kind of proportionally defensible way.
I guess, yeah. I was just, there's good advocates that are going to justify exactly the great investments. And I'm just thinking, there's a lot of energy and effort that goes pushing and pulling on this. And I was just trying to get a little bit of direction to it before we spend a lot of time negotiating and having multiple meetings. And we're just trying to give away money to do, to do good things, you know. So that was my mindset. Give away money. Any thoughts on that, Commissioner Dare? Just, you know, this is, I was referring to kind of a habitat subset of the affordable housing requests.
Right. Well, if we're already down to 40% of the ARPA fundings left.
Is this a pool that we've already set aside?
I'm just looking at, is it in the graph, transitional housing? I don't see it over there. So because we haven't allocated, we haven't committed it yet, have we, Greg? On the graph, administrated, it's got, no, there's nothing there for affordable housing. So this is going to be on top. And if we do do almost 6 million.
That's just wild requests. So we could cut that in half right now and say, here, work with this pool instead. I mean, and I'm just throwing out ideas, but is $6 million the right number? Because that's just people's requests.
You know, I, I think Habitat for Humanity is an outstanding program to help it, give it future projects. I think that's really important. And so I will be happy when we can have those groups present to us. I, you know, talk to those people, see what they're doing. They have incredible track records, extremely successful. So it'll be good to make them so they can sleep nights.
So one of the other concepts is the cost of land. And this is where I think, you know, as I say, we've differed a little bit. It's, if we give a bunch of money to a habitat and they go pay a, a good market rate for some parcels, that empowers the market to be more bold, saying, yes, our land is worth this much money. And the next guy has to, you know, either bid against or at least have a reference to that big expenditure. I would much rather try to lower the cost of land by, you know, and as I say, the UGB expansions and distributing or dispersing the development out of the high dollar areas. So I mean, there's a mindset or a concept there. Because I was, I just remember one of the, the sisters, one says.
Oh, but I love that project. I mean, Laird Superfood is.
Is that a lot of dollars for those, that land? That's kind of what I'm thinking.
It's down. It was 1.5 million. She's brought it down considerably. I would hope it would be a lot more lots than what they were originally talking about. But I know they were trying to really realize that, you know, it's a nonprofit that they're doing, and we need those costs down. So I know that Charlene's really working on that. And.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we give them, here, here's a bunch of free money from the federal government, and we're going to empower you to go do a great thing. And we've disturbed the market by doing that, just like we're talking about wages. Same thing, right?
But the whole project there is to make it housing affordable for people to be able, actually be able to work and live in Sisters.
What I'm referring to, so the federal government's going to buy down the cost of land. That government defines land use rules, which makes it a high cost, which really perturbs the market. It's a parallel path.
We're talking, just talking about, we're talking about a couple of acres in here. That is not a market driver. These people.
But you know, somebody that wants to buy or sell, some real estate agent's going to say, look at this comparable. And then all of a sudden, they're like, it just drives the market.
That's why.
Same situation.
That's why these entities, you know, that's why the habitats, you know, cultivate their relationships with, with realtors and landowners who, who get it, who get the big picture and are, are willing to like not gouge them for, you know, the premium price. I mean, you know, a Bend Habitat, I, I know works with, what's the gentleman's name, a Realtor, Tony Levinson, right? Who, who works really hard to, to identify, you know, like good centrally located parcels of land that could be, you know, that could be bought at, you know, at, at cost or, you know, at, at, you know, not, not what you would charge, you know, not what you could, what you would charge someone who was going to go out, turn around and go out and buy and, and build a bunch of $800,000 homes. So they, you know, these organizations who have done, you know, as Commissioner Dare was saying, have a track record and have done the work in our communities and have, have the relationships, they're getting the best deals that they can. And that, and they're just dealing with the, the real, real costs of, you know, of, you know, getting, getting work done, building housing in, in this community. And they're producing something that is desperately needed, which is housing that, you know, housing that someone who is on a locally based salary, who's, who's earning local wages actually could afford to live in.
So we've got affordable housing with $5.8 million in requests. Are we going to think of that as the, the domain of discussion? Or would we think of it as less than that? I guess maybe that's a high level way to look at this. You know, because if we had sent Greg off to a committee meeting of all the habitat people, they're going to be like, yeah, okay, if we're talking 6 million, I want my share, which is going to be this. And if, but if they're talking three or four million, it'll be a different discussion. So I'm just throwing out an idea here. And, and maybe there's no reason to limit it. I'm just, you know, we should double it. I'm just throwing out ideas.
I mean, in terms of, in terms of outstanding, like what's outstanding that we want to use ARPA funds for? I mean, we have had some wastewater discussion. We, we still don't know what our business assistance pot is going to come in at. And we've got, we've got affordable housing. I mean, I, I think of, of those things, affordable housing is one of the, you know, of the outstanding priorities or goals, affordable housing is one of the high, it's way up at the top for me. And, you know, I would be, you know, I would be completely comfortable and, you know, supportive of, of, you know, putting $6 million in, into affordable housing projects. I mean, like maybe we can get even more than, than what's currently in the, in the, in the pool, in the mix that, that has been submitted to us. And, and, you know, anything we can do to get like even more housing for the dollar is great. But.
The scope of that, of $6 million, because it's already 5.8, is the right size probably for this pool of ARPA dollars is, I mean.
I feel, I feel like it's a, I feel like it's.
16% of it, so.
Is that, I mean, we put quite a bit into childcare. So six is, it almost feels like it could be a small number in one aspect of it too.
I mean, I.
What's the first line?
If we come out, if we come out with childcare and affordable housing being the, the largest allocations that we do in terms of categories, I'll feel like we did the right thing.
What is, who's behind affordable home ownership?
I don't have that detail with me. I can get.
Okay. I just, because I, that's why I just wondered. Okay. We'll have to find out. Thank you.
So do you feel comfortable with that scope of the request then?
16%, 15.7, yes.
Okay, good. So that, that gives, so the scope of what's already on the paper is, is digestible by the commission at this time.
But I want to.
Go forth and negotiate.
But I want to know who this affordable home.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that information out. So maybe that's the core request?
I don't know. I would have thought it would say core.
I don't remember.
So just to make sure I, I understand, are we saying 6 million of the remaining 15 million or so is going to be put in a reserve to be determined how it will be used based on the meetings with the Affordable Housing Coalition to come back to the board at some point? Is that what we're saying?
Think of it as the bucket or whatever. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, we're setting it aside to be used for affordable housing. How specifically it'll be used to be determined a little bit later.
Kind of like we did with childcare.
Okay, got it.
With a coalition in front of us.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. That's interesting. Very exciting to be able to see that. Thumbs up on at least that scale.
There are other ideas we could throw into the mix. I mean, a long time ago, we were, we were discussing the idea of, you know, well, what about setting a certain amount of money aside just for, you know, just to make local governments whole who are doing SDC relief? You know, that's a, that's a, that's not giving the money to, you know, a, a nonprofit or a non-governmental organization that's giving the, the money directly to, you know.
Yeah.
Various, various local taxing districts who are.
I think of, you know, if we're going to help preload something in Redmond, if we get there, that's kind of that same concept, isn't it? I mean, it's, it's a sewer, sewer, future sewer capacity that's going to be utilized, that's prepaid for, which is reducing that future SDC requirement. Or at least, yeah, reducing it.
And don't forget looking at the small business and nonprofit assistance. If we've only approved 1.6 and the request is an additional 2.2, that's pretty significant. And in that is, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, and they are asking for $619,000 plus dollars that they lost with the impact.
Well, that, the, the, the formula or the kind of methodology for people to submit their, their business assistance requests for, for COVID losses, I'll be, I'll be interested to see what the Boys and Girls Club number looks like when they run it through the, run it through the process. Because, you know, maybe it's still 600,000, maybe it's less.
Well, remember, then they have to do a capital campaign to get that second building done over at the hospital on the five acres. So, you know, they've, they've got to raise money for that in order to continue, complete that, that whole project. So.
So is there a formal direction on the 6 million from the board?
I'm, I'm supportive of that.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's going to be a minutes motion, but I'd say there's thumbs up support for that scope of affordable housing in that section and for negotiation between the, the current players. And if anybody could optimize it more, it's time to start talking. Is that supportive, Commissioner Dare?
Honestly, I, okay, we're talking about 600,000. I would like to know who it is before I agree to it. And if we actually have that team of people putting something together, I, I think we should listen to what they've, what they're saying.
So all this is doing is putting that scope of $6 million for that team to show up and say, we got great ideas.
But then that means if that 600,000 is a little shady, you know, where do we put that money to? We'll take it out?
I would imagine that the, this group could come back with all of these on the list or none of them, or some combination of that. Because these, remember, these were all individual requests that came in. And now we're talking about the issue as a group, as a pool.
Everything would be justified. I mean, I wouldn't assume that there's anybody going to sneak anything through here. It's going to be a very public process.
Yeah. We'll, we'll review every single sub-proposal. And Greg, there's.
You could decide to increase the pool above 6 million or less. There's still a lot of freedom and flexibility left.
And Greg, there are, there are people who are part of that consortium who don't have a direct dog in the fight, right? The Lynn McConnells of the world and people like, okay, that, that's, yeah. I, I mean, to have, you know, to have someone, you know, someone like Lynn McConnell, maybe like, I don't know, is David Brant involved? I mean, to have people who aren't specifically asking for money, but are, you know, can kind of stand back and say, you know, here are the, here are the places where if you put a dollar in, it, it has an impact. I, I think that's a very helpful thing. And, and, you know, in your discussions with them, I mean, particularly the, the Linds and the Davids of the, of the group, I would, I would encourage them, if there are, if there are ideas for how to turn the dial that are not included in here, you know, like that, like the SDC relief or, or, you know, something like that, like, please let us, please let us know what you think.
And that is the scope of the discussion.
Great. Yeah. Because I mean, with the.
Again, the scope is really, you know, we have a limited source of resource, a limited amount of resources. How do we maximize the impact of those resources to lower the cost of housing into the future?
Great. Yeah. Because I mean, you know, look at what happened when we empowered the childcare coalition that way. They, you know, they, they brought a bunch of proposals and then we, we said, you know, well, what really is going to turn the dial? And they came back and they said, investing $3 million in developing the workforce, that's what's going to turn the dial. And, and, you know, that was, in my, in my mind, you know, that, that package was so much better because, because those, those, you know, area experts, you know, kind of, you know, identified something that wasn't on the list originally. Yeah. Thank you.
So I had some, a note on here. In fact, Holly's still in the room. So the Lord's Acre Day, I don't know if you want to speak on that at all. I don't know how involved you might be in that. But it was just interesting. It was advertising in the newspaper recently in the Bed Bulletin, talking about Lord's Acre at Palabut. But also the history of that. You know, I mean, it's, it's an acre for the Lord's work, an acre of land on a large farm, just like we're talking about, right? So just let's plant an extra acre and give it to the, the community and the church for, for doing good things. So as I say, I don't know, I want to put you on the spot. Do you have any thoughts on that if you want to share? Just the history of it. Because as I say, I think you've probably attended. But as I say, I'm just bringing this up because I had a note on my page from our.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBois. Yeah, as a resident of Palabut, I can, I can testify that our family has participated.
Yeah, as a resident of Palabute, I can, I can testify that our family has participated in that festival for years. And I think even when, when President Kennedy was a senator, he attended, he and his wife attended and purchased a quilt. So it's a, it's a phenomenal event. I'm so glad they get to do it again this year live. The church there in, at the center of Palabute spends a year planning for it, baking goods for it, collecting the different foods that they will sell. And historically, it was started because the, the farmers would bring an acre worth of their crop or, and they would donate it to the church, and then the funds were used for missions work in the community and beyond. And I believe that is still, I'm not a, I'm not a member of their church, but I believe that is still their goal. And it draws people from all over the region and beyond. And it's, it's a day of, you know, they pull pigs out of the ground that have been cooking for a few days, and you can, you can smell it in Palabute. And, and it's a great community event.
So, and it's 75 years or so, something?
Yeah, this is their 75th year.
But I was just pointing, I think one of the terminology was plant a row for the needy was, was referring. But my point is, it's, you know, around the country, there's a hundred years, something year history of this kind of effort. And it was based in the church originally, and now the community is doing it. So it's just exciting when you equate those two together, like, oh, yeah, we've been doing this for a long time.
Yeah, I think folks lose sight of the fact that, that when a church decides to do something like that, you know, they, they have a built-in workforce ready to reach out to their community. And, and both that church, that church has done a phenomenal job of, of that, as, and I'm sure there are other churches doing similar things, but...
It's great to have that history.
Yeah, it sure is.
And I think they have really good pies. I rem, I think that's what I...
And quilts.
Yes.
Let's just say, I had a note on here...
My husband's into pie, so I have to, like, go where they're selling pies, right?
Oh, they have wonderful pies and cinnamon rolls.
That's a sense of community.
Cinnamon rolls, yes.
I, I'm, am I missing a request from...
Oh, no. So what I'm referring to...
You're just, you're just giving a little, a little plug for the Lord's Acres.
It was a note, yeah, it's kind of an advertisement for an event coming up this weekend, but it's also equating it to, you know, plant a row for the needy. I think it was some of the terminology and this effort. And it's been going on for 100 years and all kinds of fun history here. So, but it was just putting it in perspective. When you hear about the, the Lord's Acre event in Palabute, that's the same, same topic started from many years ago. Thank you for sharing. I figured you were still here. Yeah.
Many, many good ideas have long histories behind them.
Yes. So, good. Okay. So anything else on ARPA funding update? And then would we want to bring anything? So as I say, we were talking about setting the agenda. I don't know if we were going to get to, you know, kind of one, two today or package up in the future. That's why I said maybe we'll meet on Wednesday. Is there any, any requests to meet on Wednesday on this topic? Or should we just send them off on affordable housing and see what...
Why don't we meet on Wednesday? Because maybe someone will have seen what we're talking about today and let us know tonight that we need to bring it back up on Wednesday.
So we'll, it'll be, yeah...
We're down, if we only have 40% of our funding, or wait, 75%.
We're getting big commitments here, yeah.
Yeah, that there may be someone in the community that really didn't realize they should have reached out.
And Greg, when was the High Desert Food and Farm Alliance ready to come back?
Yeah, we haven't scheduled that yet. We haven't finished the communication back and forth, but as soon as we do, I would put an agenda, or an item on the agenda for consideration. If for some, if Wednesday, if we want to slot something in, and there's time to do that, and I get a response back, I could bring that back on Wednesday.
Great. Yeah, so we'll see what comes on Wednesday. So we'll, we'll get to that agenda item and see what's ready. All right, anything else?
Is it me?
Yep, good. Seeing none, we'll move to our next agenda item. A little bit later than we thought, but we did start the last one right on time. We just went a little long. So this one, a discussion of the Illegal Marijuana Market Enforcement Grant Program. And this would be DA's office, Sheriff's Office, folks, there may be people waiting in the Zoom. There we go. So Kathleen Mihenkoop is on, yep, so. You can, it looks like you're the only one attending so far, but go ahead and kick us off.
Okay, sounds good. So thank you again for having us today. We are here to talk to you about getting approval to accept our 2021 grant from the CJC, which, to, for our illegal marijuana project. This is the third year or the third grant cycle that we've actually gotten funding for this work. And it really focuses on enhanced enforcement as well as prosecution to address the illegal marijuana market here in Deschutes County. The grant funding will cover personnel as well as training and rent and some equipment for the program. And our big kind of change, one of the things that we're requesting is for one of the management analysts, which would be Sterling Foster, who is the other part of my FTE, moving him with the grant funds from a .3 FTE to a .4 FTE, since that position is funded at a .1 position through the grant funding. The grant funding goes from July 1st, 2021, through December 30th, or sorry, December 31st, 2023. So it's a two-and-a-half-year grant cycle. And we are, with this grant, it's not actually written in within the proposal, but we had some rollover funds from our last project that are going to allow us to continue to use through the end of 2023. And a big part of what we're going to be focusing on this time is we have some consultants that are coming in to help us really kind of dive a little deeper into what's occurring at these illegal sites to help us determine whether or not there is additional environmental degradation happening and identifying some of that. And so it's a pilot to help us determine whether or not this is something we should be looking at going on into the future. Or is our speculation that environmental damage is actually occurring not accurate? So we're, we're going to be working with these researchers, and we're going to be using some of our rollover funds to help fund that little pilot study that we're doing through the grant. So it's kind of a quick snapshot of the program. Do you have any specific questions?
Kathleen, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this, but one of the things I've, I've been trying to get, get my hands around is we have a, we have a range of activity focused on illegal marijuana. You know, we're, we're trying to find black market production, a black market distribution. And I, I don't, like, I don't yet have a good sense of whether that is all under a single umbrella or whether we have multiple kind of streams of work happening simultaneously. I know that historically, before we, before we lost the, the tax revenue, that we will be getting a portion of back soon, that there, that those funds, you know, a slice of those funds were being used for, for detectives and code enforcement work that, in, in support of this mission of, you know, cracking down on illegal marijuana. And so I was just wondering whether the work described in this proposal encompasses everything? Or is this a subset of, of everything that's happening, you know, related to illegal marijuana in the county? And if so, if it's kind of like all under one umbrella, but this is only a portion, like, I, I was trying to get a sense of how much this grant makes up of the, the whole of, you know, of the, the total budget for that work?
So I probably can't answer the entire question, but my understanding is that this is the majority of the funding specifically around illegal marijuana for the code team. So we have two detectives that are involved from the Sheriff's Department, and, and going forward, we'll have another half a detective from Bend PD. For both of the agencies, they actually fund the work of those detectives from their own budgets, but what we've requested through the grant funding is for overtime for those activities. We currently have only one detective working on a marijuana, on the marijuana project, given just staffing issues, but we're looking to hire a second one through the Sheriff's Department and as well as another detective who will split his time, half with the marijuana and half with just other drugs under the code team. So, does that answer any, does that help at all?
Yeah, no, it helps me understand a little bit about kind of the, the human resources and the funding that's being invested in these, in these, in this work and how it all comes together. So does, does this grant require a match or no?
It doesn't. And I know that a lot of times the, the detectives that are specifically marijuana, they help with some of the other code activities. And one of the unique things that we're doing, because of the resources that we have in Deschutes County, we actually also work with some of the other counties and help their law enforcement agencies when they have specific marijuana grows. Because some of these grows, it's related to illegal activity, are quite large, and they need some additional assistance. So I think that helped us get our proposal as well as the fact that we are working kind of cross-county and helping other of our local community members.
Yeah, yeah. No, and then when you're, and when you're dealing with, I mean, you know, now we're learning that there is, there is organized crime activity, you know, like national or international organized crime activity involved with, with some of these, these production operations. It's, you know, the, the least we can do is work cross-county on that, you know, to, to match the international or national organized crime bodies with, with a little bit of local coordination.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So Kathleen, I was just talking to Rob Bovet a couple of weeks ago, and he was saying that there are nine counties that actually have tremendous problems with cannabis, illegal cannabis at this point in time. And I was really glad to see that through this grant, we were able to buy the two light lab cannabis analyzers. I think that's great that we have them, they're available, and our people will know how to run them. Because I know originally, they had to, you know, borrow one from the state police, and then the state police had to send somebody to run it. So, you know, it just seems like we're definitely ramping up for what, you know, we found out in Alfalfa.
Yeah, and I don't, but I believe that we're planning on, as soon as we get approval, we'll actually purchase this. So I don't, my understanding is we don't have them in-house yet, but we will shortly and making sure that the team is up to speed on ensuring that they use them correctly.
Oh, good, good.
I thought Dustin Miller said that we had them.
He said we had them.
Oh, and they may have already gotten them. Okay. And I'm in a different office, and that's, that potential portion of the funding is handled specifically by the Sheriff's Department, so they may have already taken care of that.
I believe that's what Dustin had said during our marijuana advisory committee meeting on the, what is it, 18th of October?
So we were able to share that information with you at this time.
Yes, it went from them to us, to you. So we finally knew something.
So one question, so the application itself was put in by the Sheriff's Office, the Bend Police, and the District Attorney's Office, correct? The three parties?
Correct.
Because inside the third page or so, the fourth page, it talks about rate the following illegal marijuana market problems as they exist. So I mean, that's kind of a statement there. Interesting seeing the trafficking and diversion is extreme, you know, that talks about the different things, code and civil violations high, financial crimes high, increased calls for service high, organized crime, juvenile use. So I mean, those are, yeah, making statements by even filling out the application to the world, letting them know, serious business here.
Yes. And it's, some of the questions are challenging to answer, but we have to look at the cases that we've had come in-house, understanding how frequently in comparison to other types of cases. And so Danielle, who's the management analyst on this project for the Sheriff's Office, she goes through all the cases every year so we can answer those questions.
Yep. Well, and we did get to go up to see a, a bus out in Alfalfa, and it was just a big old operation. And they were, you know, everybody that was picked up said, I thought it was hemp. So it was really interesting how it was a disconnect between the reality of high THC marijuana grown at a large scale for export, illegal export, and, you know, how do we get on top of that? Because we sure don't want to have a, you know, a really, I'm referring to a shootout at one of these facilities. It would be bad, but, you know, we can't let this keep going either.
When you see what they've done in Josephine and Jackson Counties, the takeover, you know, they, you know, just totally cleaning out the creeks, the streams, just doing whatever they wanted, you know, we definitely would like to help them, support them in their endeavors. But I, I noticed that really we need more people that are able to recognize marijuana use when they're driving. In here, it seemed like that was, that's still a problem that we have on how to actually properly identify. It's, it seemed like it was repeated in a lot of the difficulties that we have in the state.
It is, because there is an actual test to implement to determine when somebody recently used marijuana or not for driving. So that is a challenge, but that's a challenge not just here in Deschutes County. It's a challenge for any state that now has legalized marijuana.
Right. I know. It was just fascinating reading, you know, so many people said, we need to get our laws simplified, and, and then they're very difficult to enforce. So those were like the top two responses from officers.
Yes, from, oh, so yes, from the officer survey that was done, correct?
And their laws are hard to...
And one thing we are working on, which was kind of part of that rollover, is our website to kind of educate people on what are the current rules and regulations regarding cannabis use, growing anything related to cannabis here in Deschutes County. And the website is developed, and we're currently doing the editing on it. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, all fingers crossed, it's taking a long time to go through the edits, it's quite large, we'll be able to share that with all of you.
Are those the Canofax that you have?
The Canofax, yes.
Yeah, I thought those were, that was really fascinating. So, okay, so it's almost ready to go, then?
As soon as I finish doing my edits and can send them back to the web developers. So yes, we're getting near the end that it's going to be up.
Great.
But I don't have an exact date.
But here's a preview in the, in the, the agenda item here, huh?
There is.
Good. So is there an approval here? So approval to receive this grant is where we're at today, correct?
Well, it's coming back to you on Wednesday, I think.
Okay.
Oh, is it for today or Wednesday? Now we're, yeah, so it talks about approval of document 23.
Says discussion on the thing, but upcoming resolution.
Do you know, Kathleen, is this for Wednesday, then? Is that the idea?
It says upcoming. To be honest, I'm not 100% sure Joe at the Sheriff's Office...
Yeah, the document is...
...the paperwork, so I assumed it was all today, but I could be wrong.
I think it's agenda item two. I think it's agenda item two on Wednesday.
Okay, so is it consent?
Could be consent, or you could talk...
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry, I guess we need to, when we do separate, and we need to make it real clear about the fact that this is for discussion only or something. So let's take that for discussion only today. There is a document number 21-23, but that'll be for Wednesday. So also, somebody could please forward this to the Cannabis Advisory Panel. I mean, this, this agenda item, even just the attachments and the agenda item for today so they can see it. The application itself and the proposed Canofax website. I see a bunch of people nodding their head, who's can do that for us? Make sure that, Peter can do that? There we go, okay. So our Community Development Director will send that to the Cannabis Advisory Panel. Anything else for this item? Seeing none, next, item number six, fee waiver request.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. This agenda item pertains to a fee resolution, excuse me, a fee waiver request on behalf of Wyrica Butte Enterprises, though represented by Ed Fitch, and Ed may be joining on Zoom. I, I saw an email from him that said he was certainly going to be listening over this discussion. So the request is for a fee waiver reduction for a plan amendment zone change to redesignate an exclusive farm use zone property to surface mining for aggregate resources. The property is approximately five acres in size, and it not only is zoned exclusive farm use, it also contains a wildlife area and sage grouse area combining zone. The property is located near Hampton and Highway 20. And the fee waiver request is to reduce the land use application fees for a plan amendment zone change to $6,000. The plan amendment and zone change application for the subject property range from approximately $24,000 to $27,000. It just depends on whether... It just depends on whether there's a Goal Three exception that needs to occur. I did coordinate with Chris Doty, the Road Department Director. The department is certainly interested in surface mining materials, aggregate materials in this area of the county, but I need to underscore that this fee waiver request is really for the board's consideration. The Road Department was not approached on this matter and does not have an opinion on the fee waiver request. As noted in the memorandum, staff finds itself, recommendation is for the board to deny the request specifically because of the Community Development Department Fee Waiver Policy. That policy really pertains to nonprofits or public organizations when there's a public purpose, and there's not a carve-out for privately initiated applications. So, staff is available to answer any of your questions. I see that Ed Fitch is on Zoom, and so you're certainly welcome to engage him, but I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any follow-up remarks.
So, yeah, any thoughts to start with?
Oh, I just wanted to make one correction on its previous fee waiver actions. In that first line, it says September 29th, and it should say 2021. It says 2001. I just wanted it for the record, Peter.
Thank you.
Because I was thinking like, wow, Randy's been in this position for quite a while.
Yeah, that's a typo on my part. Yeah, it should say 2021 on page two. Yep, thank you for catching that, Commissioner.
Well, I just-
So, that shows, yeah, September of this year and then October of this year.
Correct. Yep. Apologies for that typo.
Peter, there is, so, when we look at the applicable fee waiver policies, there is, you know, number four, which, you know, addresses what you were speaking out about, provide a public benefit provided by nonprofit or public organization. But then there is this, also this number eight, that the board may waive fees in any other case where the public benefit is served and other remedies have been exhausted. And I, you know, I have definitely, I've definitely heard arguments that the public benefit is served by this project, but, I mean, short of, short of dragging Chris Doty here to, you know, to give us comments about, you know, the value of, you know, having surface gravel available, is there, is there any way for us to unpack a little bit more what, you know, what public benefit we're talking about here?
It's a great question, Commissioner. You know, certainly the board has the prerogative to interpret this policy aid if you find that it's a, it's a, a public benefit is served. I know the remedies are exhausted. Staff is not in a position to interpret it that way, but it's, you know, again, this is, this is up to the board's discretion. It is known, and certainly Ed Fitch can speak to the challenges of aggregate materials or resources in this area of our county. And I already echoed, and it's noted, echoed on my opening remarks, just that our Road Department Director has acknowledged that, you know, they would benefit by an aggregate resource in this area. But I need to also emphasize again that the Road Department's not taking a position on it, and just representing as the department with our fee waiver policy, you know, we are bound by, you know, the policy four there, but that doesn't preclude the board from interpreting it differently, and that's, that's why it's before you this evening.
So, experience for myself in Southern Deschutes County, there's been discussion of aggregate for paving and roadwork, even just gravel roads. So, one of the most valuable things you can do on a dirt road is just put a little bit of gravel, at least at the intersections, to control the situation. But it's distance, you know, when you load up a big old truck with 10 yards of heavy, heavy rock, it's a big difference between driving five and 10 miles and having to go 50 miles each way round, round trip. So, it's very valuable, just, it's all a function of distance. So, this has been through a process at the county by receiving the request, and there's been no, it's been denied twice, basically, before it got to us, as I just confirming.
Yeah, correct, Mr. Chairman. I generalized, the staff recommendation is-
Yep.
As noted in the memorandum, for those that might be listening online, the way the policy procedure works is one first respectfully requests, in this case, a fee waiver reduction to the Community Development Director, that was respectfully declined. Then there's an appeal process to the County Administrator, that was respectfully declined, and then one can appeal it to the Board of County Commissioners, and that's where we are this time.
Our procedures, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
And then the policies, number four and eight. Any other direction or thoughts?
I guess my other question, Peter, so, we have our fee schedule, and, you know, this potential range, 24 to $27,000. And do we have, do we have a methodology to, you know, to, or, you know, documentation or analysis that shows, you know, this is, you know, so that we can, we can say to applicants, you know, this is really the amount of person hours that this is, this is staff time this is going to take, and this is how much that costs us? Because I do think it's, you know, if this is, if this is the cost of our, you know, of our staff time to process an application, I mean, we, if we don't charge the applicant, I mean, you know, we need to pay for that somehow, so.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It's an excellent question. Community Development Department is primarily based by fees, and there was a fee study that was performed just a few years ago, and the fees reflect average costs. This is, this is certainly an application, given its location and its request, that will, I think, generate some significant interest in the community. The fees do capture a hearings officer proceeding because of it's a rezone from, potentially from exclusive farm use to surface mine. It requires not only going into a hearings officer, but because it's resource zone per our procedures, there's also a second hearing involved with the Board of County Commissioners. So, it is a two-hearing-part process because there's sage grouse and antelope in this range, you're talking about addressing, and a proposed surface mining, you're talking about three Goal Five resources that will have to be addressed. So, the, and that's not even including, you know, traffic analysis per the transportation planning rule. So, this, this is a significant application. And, but nonetheless, the fees are an average, and that's what was identified, just like I said, a couple of years ago.
Thanks for unpacking that for me.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dyer?
Okay. I appreciate that it has been recommended that we don't approve this. What I had wondered and highlighted was that we have previously reviewed the application with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, who have opined that there should not be any negative impact on the sage grouse population. But I was actually looking for like that letter, just to see if it, was it attached?
You mean a letter from ODFNW?
Yeah.
Commissioner, it was not included with the request for a fee waiver reduction. There was a pre-application conference a few months ago where the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife were invited to participate. I'm not aware of their, of their remarks. I mean, there is, there is sage grouse in this area. As part of a, as part of an application, the applicant would want to know specifically whether or not there's mitigation required, but that certainly can be a question, you know, if the board chooses to engage the requister, again, Ed Fitch is on Zoom, but I don't have anything in writing nor this, notice of the department.
Well, I was just really feeling that, you know, it doesn't fit the definition to get a fee waiver. And if I were to change that opinion, I would actually want to see that documentation because I know how protected the sage grouse are.
And Peter, did you, did you mention that antelope and pronghorn are also a Goal Five covered species?
Yes, Commissioner, the sage grouse are identified in the sage grouse area combining zone, and then we have a wildlife area combining zone, and antelope are designated on that Goal Five inventory. So, as part of a Plan Amendment Zone Change, just for context, an applicant will be required to demonstrate how this conflicting use, they'll have to go through a, what's called a economic energy and environmental, economic, environmental and social energy consequences analysis to document how this new conflicting use will, you know, address both sage grouse and antelope. And for sage grouse, there's specific mitigation rules to the extent that there are impacts that have to be addressed before the surface mining zone is, maybe, whether the surface mining zone is established or prior to as part of a conditional use application for the surface mining zone. So, that mitigation responsibility, to the extent that there is one, has to be addressed before an aggregate operation commences. For antelope, that's a, that's another process, you know, to address those related impacts and what Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife believes is a appropriate level of response or mitigation. Truthfully, we, we haven't had a proposal that's affected sage grouse and/or antelope in this part of our county since the sage grouse rules were adopted by the state and adopted locally in our code. So, there's not a lot of examples, and so this is very much a, you know, regardless of the fee waiver request, to the extent that one goes forward, this is very much a matter of first impression for us because, again, we haven't seen a significant development proposal in this part of our county for quite some time.
But we, but we do know that there are, there are watchdog organizations out there that are concerned about rezones of EFU's land, and we do know that there are watchdog organizations out there who are concerned about sage grouse and pronghorn habitats. So, yeah, so, so the anticipation that there might be, that this might, you know, that we might have a lot of, a lot of hearings officer type process and hearings back to the Board of Commissioners. I mean, that's, that seems like a reasonable expectation or a crystal balling of what might happen to me.
Correct.
Okay.
So, this is an official request in front of the Board of Commissioners, staff's recommendations to denial. We've had some discussions here. Is there, are we ready to put direction to it? Is there a motion?
I don't know if I'm ready to make a motion, but I, I mean, I would just say that, you know, I, I see the potential value of this project. I can, I can, I can understand that there might be public benefit associated with this gravel source, but it, it does seem to me that the anticipated fees are needed to thoroughly process this application, and I wouldn't want to shortchange the county on, on collection of those fees to, to run this process through to the end.
Well, and, yeah, so as I say, my thought as being the quasi-judicial review board, we're just in a spot where it's probably not appropriate to kind of predispose of, I don't know, partnership or whatever might be able to be assumed if we use fees and other dollars to backfill this, too.
Yeah. Well, that's another consideration, yeah.
Oh, and I'm, you know what, I honestly might have called Chris Doty just to see if this really does make a difference, but, you know, hauling something 40 minutes or hauling something 10 minutes, you know, you know, got to drive the truck out there. So, anyway, I don't, I just don't feel that it, it fits the, our measures, and I'm not comfortable doing it at this moment.
And, and, you know, if this application is fully pursued, you know, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that we want, we don't want it to get full and fair consideration, and doesn't mean that it couldn't possibly, you know, move through the process and be approved, but I, if we're, if we're talking about who bears the cost to figure that all out, I, I do think it's appropriate to leave that with the applicant. So, I guess I would, I would move to deny the fee waiver request.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. I will acknowledge this is a, we all feel kind of the same, you know, it's like, oh, we'd like to almost help or be a partner here, but this is the land use in the state of Oregon, possible, you know, watchdog organization participation, and there's just a whole big picture around this one. So, I'm just acknowledging that I think we're all in that spot where it'd be nice if we didn't have to make this decision, but, you know, we'll go with it. So, I, and, yeah. Going to call for the vote, then. So, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
And chair votes yes for the denial of the fee waiver request. Mr. Fitch, thank you very much for joining us, and, yeah, have a great, have a good day with that notification, what we just did, yeah, sorry.
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 Okay. At this time, item number seven, oh, Wildlife Inventory Update, continued discussion and options. So, each time you bring this back, we put more clear words around, okay, yes or no, or A or B? Option one, option two?
We just got to see in real time how wildlife overlays might, might affect the way that we look at land uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is aptly timed in the agenda, I think. Good afternoon, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I'm here for a continued discussion, as noted, of the options in terms of pursuing wildlife inventory updates. Staff was here about a month ago with what we were calling a roadmap of options, fairly extensive, had a lot of data, a lot to chew on, and we're back, the royal we, I suppose, I'm back, to continue that discussion and answer any questions that the board might have. I'll briefly go over those options, those three options. I won't belabor them, but then, and we also have a slight modification to the anticipated timeline upon kind of further thought and research. We do, staff anticipates that each option would take a little bit longer than we initially anticipated. So, I'll just go through that fairly briefly and then open it up for discussion, if that's okay. Option one was to select one of the three inventories to update. As you might recall, the inventories that were addressed in the DLCDTA grant were mule deer winter range, elk winter range, and sensitive birds, which included golden and bald eagles. So, this first option, which is sort of the smallest, would be a pilot project for one of these, one of these inventories. Staff would recommend, if this is chosen, that the mule deer inventory be that, be that, that update. That's, it's a highly visible species, obviously, and our impression from our inter-agency working group is that that is the best, best and newest, shiniest data.
Whenever I get a hunting tag, they're invisible.
They were in my yard this morning.
Oh, there we go, okay, wrong place, then.
Well, you don't have a tag to get one.
Yeah, yeah.
They know.
They do know.
Yeah, so that's, that would be staff's recommendation to address mule deer because they are, they are suffering, the population is declining, as we've discussed before, and so that's a critical, a critical need to kind of keep those updated, and that's, of course, open for discussion, but that's our staff's recommendation. The second option would be to do two of the three that we've initially looked at. Staff would recommend mule deer and elk because those are sort of, the actual geographic inventories do overlap a little bit, and they are similar types of data, whereas the birds are kind of just a different type of data and more, there's more of it, and it's a little, it's a little more complex to go through the analysis that's required to justify, justify these updates. Not to say that it isn't needed, because it certainly is, but given that this process would be kind of the first, first time around for us doing this, and the first time really in much of the state by a county, we recommend that elk, elk and/or deer would be that best, most efficient first pass. And then the third option would be to wait until the comprehensive plan update is completed. That's expected in 2023 or '24, depends- That's expected in 2023 or '24, depending on how, how things go. That would enable staff to have kind of some of the other pieces in the context in place. You know, as you know, the comprehensive plan looks at pretty much everything we could possibly look at, a lot of development patterns, transportation, you know, other kinds of constraints and opportunities. So that will give, afford a little bit more of a bigger picture. So those are our three options that was presented to the board. And just to discuss the timeline, we anticipate, and again, I know I sound like a broken record, but this is a new process. It is very prescribed, the process that we go through to justify, justify these changes. It's, it's outlined in state statute, requires a pretty rigorous analysis of each potential conflicting use or what, how you kind of have to, have to grade those and look at, it's essentially a large, very large matrix. It's a systematic way of evaluating how to categorize specific uses. So given that, and given that this is the, the first time doing this, we believe that doing one option, excuse me, one inventory, option one, would probably take about nine to 12 months when all is said and done. This includes the outreach, open houses with the planning commission, and then the actual legislative process. So the drafting of all of the legal justification, the findings, probably back and forth with partner agencies. We've been already having discussions with DLCD, all of that, as well as the actual public hearing process. So we anticipate that option, one inventory, would take about nine to 12 months. Similarly, option two, which would be the two inventories, we think that that would probably take 12 to 15 months. And that's, I realize that's a bit of a wide range, but we, it just depends on kind of all the factors involved in this project, as well as kind of other, other demands on staff during that time. So we just wanted to give a realistic sense of that timeline. We were probably a little bit too, too ambitious the last go around, so we just wanted to kind of update that with a more realistic expectations. And this is how we think we could accomplish it. So with that, we're open to discussion or questions, or I don't know if anybody else has anything to add, but we're here.
So maybe the big picture here, so this is wildlife inventories in our county. It's a state goal, the state land use goals wants us to understand what's going on with wildlife. And so then how does it fit in with our comprehensive plan update? As in, is it a hard requirement in any sense to do a comprehensive plan? Or can we proceed with or without this? I guess is what I'm trying to deduce.
Well, it is. So it's technically, the update itself, the nuts and bolts, the actual kind of text is in the comprehensive plan. So if we were just doing the, the wildlife inventory update and didn't have a, a larger comp plan update planned, you're actually touching that document. That's just kind of the, the nuts and bolts. But counties are not required to update their goal five wildlife inventories. We have these ones that are 30 years old. In theory, those can just hang out forever. Is that a good idea? I can't answer that, but there is not a requirement by law that counties have to do these periodically.
Well, my goal would be, you know, just kind of a, if we're gonna do a comprehensive plan, let's be clear on that comprehensive plan, because this could, just like a contentious land use issue, this could take us all kinds of energy out too. So I'm just trying to kind of think of, can we go down this path without really adding a lot to a comprehensive plan effort? Or do we need to by law, I guess is the other way I'm thinking of this.
Yeah, I mean, the two things can operate in parallel, for sure. They can happen at the same time. There's, you know, the larger comprehensive plan and the wildlife inventory update, they will speak to each other, of course, but they are, they can happen at the same time, if, if desired, or they can be sequential. It's really up to us.
Please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, again for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. I think it's important to, you may have questions about staffing capacity. This issue, this opportunity is being framed as a pilot project. So selecting one, I think can provide an excellent example of how one wildlife inventory can be adopted into our comprehensive plan while the comprehensive plan update is, is getting kicked off. There's no doubt that through the comprehensive plan update process, the work that Tanya did, as you're well aware, that addresses elk and bald and golden eagles, that there will be other inventories that are identified that, that I suspect Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife will, will identify over the next 20 years should be revisited. From a staffing standpoint, this is something that we, we can do if the board finds that this is a priority. We are filling the, the planning manager position, that should happen this month. We will be filling a principal planner position for, for current planning. And thank you to the board's support, just a few months ago, we're in the process of filling a senior planner position in long range. And what needs to happen first is to, of course, fill the, the planning manager opening. The timing, to give you a sense of our other projects, the comprehensive plan update, I'm planning on initiating a request for proposal for a consultant by the middle of November. We hope to have a consultant onboard by February or March, in line with what was discussed back in August with the, with the Board of County Commissioners, so that the comprehensive plan can get kicked off in the spring. And right now, we're envisioning about an 18-month process to have a robust conversation with our community members, revisiting the comprehensive plan and its requisite elements, and having, having amendments to the, the plan itself, its goals and policies. We are waiting patiently, and I say that with emphasis on patience, on the Transportation Growth Management Grant. We've been waiting over a year to get Oregon Department of Transportation approval to undertake the Tumalo Community Plan and Sisters Country Trails, an opportunity to look at multimodal trail opportunities in the Sisters School District. That will happen. I'm, fingers crossed that we will get a finalization of that contract within the next month or two. We also should know in the next month whether or not we are getting funding for a technical assistance grant to look at community planning for Terribon and some additional resources to the comprehensive plan. So with the staffing that I've just mentioned, another senior planner, getting the planning manager up and onboard, these are things that we think we can undertake. Again, we're not trying to get a, I'm not trying to get, or we're not trying to get in front of the Board of County Commissioners. It's entirely up to you. There's no right or wrong answer here in terms of how wildlife inventories fit into the, to the schedule, but there's a lot forthcoming. And thankfully, I think we have the staff to, to tackle these projects. And if it's not wildlife inventories, there is a list of other projects that are on the acknowledged work plan for the department that staff can undertake. So I figured that context would be helpful as you're, you're kind of grappling with, is, is the timing right to consider a pilot project at this time?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, how many deer jumped in front of me a couple of days ago, right where I normally don't see them. They're usually right by my house because it says no hunting and it's an alfalfa field and they are there, like, you know, 30 of them, normally eating. So I don't know, I, I honestly would love to have a number, like, at least of the mule deer and know, this is what we really are dealing with in Deschutes County. I remember a conversation I had a couple of years ago and someone from the state had no idea that our cougar population had doubled. And, you know, so there, there are a lot of things out there that can, you know, plus getting hit by the side of the road that affect the mule deer. So just, okay, just to know, okay, if we really only have, what is it, 50,000 now and the state is still, you know, issuing tags to hunt, you know, 5,000 every, every fall, I mean, is, does that really work out? So, I don't know.
The ODFNW adjusts the number of tags that they issue based on their, their best population of, understanding of population. And they do, you know, all the ranges within Deschutes County, they don't, they don't survey every year, but they survey, and, you know, any range within Deschutes County, they, they will get to every couple of years. So that they're, I mean, game species is their business and they, they are, you know, there are other species that I'm, I'm guessing they don't know very much about, but mule deer, ODFNW does know a lot about. And they, they are very concerned about population declines. Certainly, road crossings are, are a concern. Certainly, you know, poaching is a concern, you know, predators might be a concern. But, you know, we've heard clearly from, you know, the biologists at ODFNW that habitat loss and habitat fragmentation is a major concern. So, you know, I, I think that we, we, we know, we know enough that, you know, this is, these inventories and, you know, changed land use regulations in those areas aren't the silver bullet that's gonna, you know, magically fix everything for our local mule deer populations, but we will, I have no doubt that we will continue to see dramatic declines without, without some action to, to preserve habitat.
Commissioner DeBoeck, do you still have like major herds of elk in Lapine?
Yeah, we have a herd, yep. Yeah, and the deer, so we see the elk come through at 30 to 50 at a time and the deer just come through at like four or five at a time, but there's, there's animals all over.
See, I had a herd of elk by me that was like 140, 150, but you don't see them very often, but.
You think it's the same, same herd?
Well, I don't know, they're out by Johnson Road, you can, you know, you can see the herd there too. I mean, it's a different herd, I'm sure, but I just, I just knew someone who left Lapine because the elk kept running through their fence constantly, you know?
Oh, the poor quail run golf course just gets demolished in the spring, all those hoof prints across all the grass and stuff.
Makes a lot of divots, right?
Yeah. So I'm still, now I'm wondering, what, what are we doing here? So the ODFNW, we already had a technical assistance grant, we have a proposed footprint, right, or a proposed map? So the geographic area for discussion is already defined.
Yes, and then the, the, the next part of it, and I, we just started to touch on this last time, is that, that list of conflicting uses. So there were some that already exist in the current wildlife area combining zone. And then there were additional ones that were suggested by ODFNW as potentially conflicting uses for, for deer and elk specifically. And then up for discussion is, you know, how does the board want to treat each of those? They can be, they can be limited, they can be prohibited, they can be allowed, and there's a whole, you know.
Well, that's gonna be the community.
Yes.
We already have input, we've already received input on it, people have already provided some opinions, for sure.
Right, so there's the geographic component and then there's kind of the, the actual language that addresses those specific uses and how those are, are dealt with.
It might be helpful to, let me put it in an additional context, because the question is essentially, what does it mean to update a wildlife inventory? And so what that means is you, you amend the comprehensive plan, you, you adopt the new inventory as a map. It then informs the wildlife area combining zone. And that zone regulates land uses in those areas, in this case, as being just contemplated, for areas that are mapped for winter range for mule deer. Some uses have limitations, some uses could be prohibited, but, but the, the inventory and the zone work hand in hand. And, and so certainly, there is deference afforded to local government in terms of how you regulate a conflicting use. So deer habitat, the importance of protecting that habitat has conflicts with certain land uses. But there's, in coordination with, we thankfully have some history with, with statewide goal, goal five. We've coordinated with the Department of Land Conservation and Development just recently. Local governments are not dictated how to respond to these types of opportunities, since there would be a public process, a, a, a set of amendments that would, would address how certain land uses are limited or potentially prohibited. But ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners gets to make that decision. And nothing in this, in, in goal five or the administrative rules outweigh what local governments and the elected officials get to ultimately choose. So your hands are not tied, but the process of bringing forth and amending the maps, creating a burden of proof, amending the zoning code, takes some rigor, which is, ties back to what, what Tanya was speaking about, why we, why we identified admittedly a conservative schedule to do this well with adequate input, open houses, but it is a significant lift.
So yeah, nine to 12 months to talk about that, that list of items that may be prohibited or conditional uses in the wildlife area combining zone.
Or uses that are permitted outright. If there's, there's a process to identify those, you have to identify the uses that are, that conflict with mule deer. And then there's a process, a decision-making tool that determines how local governments will, in this case, Deschutes County could potentially, how they weigh economic, energy, environmental, and social consequences to protecting that use. And at the end of the, we, you, the board, ultimately, the local government has to make an informed decision how they weigh those factors. And staff doesn't feel like they're mutually exclusive, but it is a significant analysis and one that counties rarely undertake because it is so time-consuming and yes, it can generate a lot of public input.
So does anybody know, or Tanya, do you know, when did the pack of wolves end up being like the, at Mount Jefferson?
I do not know the answer to that one, unfortunately.
Well, no, because I just wondered what kind of impact they're gonna have on our community.
The, the White River pack in Wasco County?
No, I was told there's a pack at Mount Jefferson. I don't think they would be called White River, I don't, that's what I was told by Officer Blalock. He said, he's seen pictures of them down there. And I know they've been spotted on Lower Bridge, Holmes Road, in my neighborhoods. So I mean, I just wondered if they are in this, and you know, they travel like 30 miles a day, so are they impacting, you know, the mule deer herd? And, and that's such a, a great region of Deschutes County. There's all the farmland and, you know, all the, the crops for deer to be eating. But they have been, they have been photographed there recently.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of a, of a documented resident pack out at, at Mount Jefferson yet. I mean, there, there's certainly, regularly, there's, there's certainly sightings of transient, transient wolves moving through the area. And it's probably just a matter of time before we have packs in Deschutes County, which is one of the reasons we, we should look at forming a wolf depredation committee at some point very soon. But I, I don't believe that there is a documented resident pack in, in that location yet.
So putting direction to this, for myself, either option one, picking up the mule deer, or option three, waiting till after the comp plan is where I generally would go, one or the other. I just think that, you know, this could be, it may be valuable to, to put it off a year just to kind of get the comprehensive plan rolling, but on the other hand, you know, pulling the trigger and pulling the trigger, but starting the process, I would support one.
We're not gonna pull the trigger.
I know, exactly. Let's not use that term.
Well, yeah, we want, I mean, we want there to be healthy wildlife populations so that people can pull the trigger.
Yep. Yeah, so as I say, I mean, option one, to proceed with a single species at this time is gonna be an effort. As I say, I think of it as a, a grand vision about how we're going to do good things for the, for the, the wildlife out there. Yeah, so, just trying to give some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I would like to, I would like to initiate one of these inventories, at least one, soon, right away. What we heard from, we heard from the public, pretty loud and clear, that, you know, people greatly value wildlife in this community and they want to see us do what we can to ensure that, that wildlife has the habitat to thrive here.
Commissioner Dare?
I, I feel like just doing a count of the mule deer, I think would be a perfect opportunity and maybe Tanya, it would only take nine months instead of 12 and.
ODFNW has the data. We, we could just call them in and have them give us a comprehensive presentation on the, the numbers, the movements, the key areas. We don't need to study how many deer there are.
So option one, pick.
We, I, I think it would be great for us to, to invite them in to, to do that for us, but we do not need to count. need to count the deer.
But the wildlife inventory update is about the land use and conflicting uses. Are we supportive of proceeding with option one for one species at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
There we go, okay. And I agree. Should we make that more official?
Do we want the presentation from ODFNW to kind of reinforce, you know, support for...
It'll be a nine to 12-month process, we could sure have them in here at some point. How about we do, let's vote on that. So, referring, if somebody can make a motion.
Okay. So, I do, I move that we do one inventory as a pilot project of the mule deer in Deschutes County, hopefully taking from nine to 12 months.
Second. There you go, even put a timeframe to it. Any other discussion? Yeah, no, that's good. Any other discussion? City, then Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, there we go.
Thank you so much. And I'll just add that I think, you know, for, it would be, for those who want to do more than that, I think perfecting the process through this, doing the first option will probably expedite subsequent processes so that there is some advantage to that. So, we do, you know, we're mindful that there are, there's more to do, but I think this will be a great first step.
Commissioner DeBoeck can count the herd in Lapine and I'll count the herd next to me and we will, we will know. So, you know.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for this.
I'll take a photo in my yard. Okay. So, that's it for our published agenda items, we do have executive session one or more today, but other items also. Please, Nick.
Commissioners, we have under other items, and Eric, I don't know if you want to join me, if we want to discuss the city of Bend's proposal at this point for Deschutes County to either manage a camp or, say, parking area or manage a contract for services. If you want to discuss that now or do you want to have executive session and come back and discuss that after that?
Well, let's talk about it now for a few moments, making sure. So, Commissioner Dare, I know you left the room at one point when we had our joint meeting with the city of Bend.
Yes, that's because I had, I was the chair for the COAC meeting.
Right, you were running another meeting.
Yes.
But there was very specific request that the county take the lead in a...
She was saying it right when I was walking out of the room.
Yeah, okay, contracting, yep.
Yes, we could get back our 750,000, but we would get to manage, yes.
Looks like Eric's ready to say something or you're just...
No, I'm just on deck.
Okay, you're just really...
I'm happy to lead this discussion if you wish, Commissioners, to start with. So, the city of Bend made this request at the joint meeting last week, at the end of the meeting, and they also announced that this Wednesday, November 3rd, they're going to begin to talk about identifying either managed camp or safe parking area locations potentially. I think somebody at the meeting mentioned Juniper Ridge, they didn't talk about specific locations, but they mentioned it. Following the meeting, I immediately, Eric and I immediately started discussing it, we reached out to our health services team, Janice, Molly, Colleen, we've had offline conversations with Dave as well, just about what this might look like and a couple of immediate responses. Number one, we want to respond to the city very quickly as they make their decision about where they might be considering either outdoor shelter, a managed camp, a safe parking area, et cetera, so that they can make informed decisions about who might manage that or manage the services provided to it. So, we solicited comments, I've collected those comments and I think it's important to recognize a couple of things. One, it was a great meeting, very productive meeting, we did agree to explore creating a joint office on homelessness with the city and we're going to begin those discussions in short order. However, staff recommends at this time that we do not move forward with either a proposal to either manage a camp, manage an outdoor shelter, or manage a contract for services. We don't have the staff capacity, it's not our area of expertise. When it was with Veterans Village, we didn't move forward with that project until we had an identified operator, which was the Central Oregon Veterans Outreach. And we would propose the same avenue on this one for several reasons. For the reasons I just mentioned, this is also city of Bend-owned property, this isn't Deschutes County-owned property. Instead, we would recommend that the city consider contacting the Rogue Retreat or Hope University, who may provide those types of services. So, that's where our collective discussion has been at this point. We certainly will honor the board's direction, whatever it may be. I think it's just helpful if either I can share the information with City Manager Eric King or we share a message from the Board of Commissioners to the Bend City Council in short order, if we know where we might be going here within the next couple of days so that it can inform their decision. So, Eric, anything to offer?
No, you covered it well, thank you.
So, with that, Commissioners, I'll turn it back over to you and if we, if you have a sense of where you might be with that request at this point, great, and if we need more time, we can take more time as well.
Yeah, so this is our first meeting since that Thursday afternoon meeting. Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang?
I guess I would say that I think the idea of the county taking on the management, and we can unpack what that means, of an authorized encampment, managed camp is very different than what we have done before. We have provided a certain swath of the services, the wraparound services for homeless people before. We have been involved now in the discussions of, you know, these hypothetical discussions about, you know, what these managed camps or villages might be like, but we have not managed one ourselves. You know, and I, what that would take, I think, is a commitment like what we saw in Clackamas County that resulted in their Veterans Village. In that case, you know, they decided that they were going to fully invest in that and make it happen, you know, give the land, you know, put the dollars up, hire, hire the people necessary to operate it. So, the, I appreciate staff's concern about, you know, about kind of doing something we haven't done before and what that, you know, how time-consuming that could be, but, you know, if we look at that example from Clackamas County, they didn't, they didn't have the county staff operate their Veterans Village. They contracted a nonprofit organization to undertake that work. And so, if we did want to entertain the city of Bend's proposal, I guess I would recommend that we use that kind of a model, that we would take it on and we would, we would contract the expertise to do that. I, you know, we could also just leave it with the city to find that expertise themselves. We could, we could try to be helpful by contributing funds or kind of, you know, suggesting reallocation of some of the funds that we have committed to authorized encampments in Bend, you know, towards that purpose, towards the management, as opposed to towards, you know, land or, you know, infrastructure or things like that. But I'm, I'm not as opposed to it as, you know, I guess I'm not, I'm not as opposed to it as the stack recommendation, you know, is proposing, but I'm also, you know, not, you know, I appreciate that this would be different for us than what we've done before and it would require, it would take an appetite to do things differently and to dive into something that we have not done before.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think we should absolutely be an advocate for the successful operation of this thing, a place where people will stay. So, I've been really working on this, talked to a lot of people in the last few days, even since our meeting, and as soon as you start talking about it, people have all kinds of different visions. Well, we can't call it a camp, we should call it a village, we can't do this, we have to have permanent this, we can't have temporary something, you know, so everybody's thoughts go all over the map. We, I support, absolutely support finding an operator for a location in the city of Bend, where we have resources to be able to support them financially. We do support very specific, you know, behavioral health, mental health issues, we have outreach efforts already. So, it all boils down to finding the operator and, you know, I think the request was, once again, it was, we have a great idea, how about you contract an operator to run this thing and I don't want to receive that as the county, but we can definitely be an advocate to make sure this is successful. I mean, I see it as a bright future, we're going to, we're going to find something, we're going to do it, we're going to figure out the Central Oregon culture around this and move forward, but, yeah, I mean, I don't see starting up the, you know, the management of a place for people, as I say, I'm keeping it even more generic now that I've talked to more people.
How do you feel about use of county ARPA funds?
Oh, yeah, let's go. Well, we've already committed 1.5 and 750, so I think I'm referring to those dollars, I don't know if you are.
I would definitely at least want to start with those.
Yeah, okay, making sure we're...
So, it will be very, I'm sure, challenging to find an operator and the 750,000 that we have committed, I would hope that that would help with those overall costs. There'll be initial costs, but the fact that it is on city of Bend land, I feel like it really needs to stay with the city of Bend, but, you know, we can definitely help them. And I think it's just, you know, like thinking about the stabilization center I went to in Eugene, it was actually run by somebody, you know, there's got to be a group out there that, you know, would want to come and run it and has that expertise. So, I'm sure that, you know, the Bethlehem Inn has got, you know, the huge project going on now in Redmond, they've got what's going on here, you know, they probably have their hands full at the moment, but maybe even like, you know, Shepherd's House would consider it. They do a really nice job and they have a long track record here. I'm sure Dave probably wouldn't want me to mention that. Dave Notori, not you, Dave Doyle.
It's, I mean, what we're talking about is larger in scale, but it is not so different than what COVO is going to be doing at our Veterans Village, you know, kind of...
And I want to thank a couple of people in the community, they've actually told me that they will volunteer and help some of the homeless projects. They just want to volunteer and they want to help and make sure that, and I, you know, I want to thank people for stepping up and realizing it can't be done, you know, out in the dark, people actually need to step up. So, thank you.
So, Commissioner, you mentioned expertise and I don't know that it's even expertise, it's just passion, you know, because the facts are the facts, it's going to be a kind of a messy process getting from point A to B, no matter what we do. So, it's really about passion and commitment. Expertise will come from the school of hard knocks after we do it for a while, is what I'm thinking.
And there's a lot of entities doing this around the state that we can learn from too, I mean...
Well, look at Veterans Village.
Take their rules and, you know, just...
We visited that September 1st of 2020 and, okay, we're missing the party right now, it's from, you know, 3:00 to 7:00 tonight, and then it's next week too, but they will finally be opening and it's a year later. So, this is, this is really wonderful, but that's only 15 veterans getting them into a healthier arrangement. So, I thank them so much.
A lot of passion by the Commissioners, but yeah, no thank you on a request to specifically contract. There you go.
Okay, thank you, and we'll relay to them that we're still committed to the ARPA funds of what's been allocated, $750,000. Would you like for me to communicate that to Eric King? Would you like for us to...
Yeah, for a town, I could call the mayor on that too, but yeah.
Okay, well, and I heard the Commission also state that, you know, we'll support the city, but we won't be the ones that hold the contract at this point on this property. Okay. Anything else?
No, that covers it.
Okay, thank you. So, that was it for other items that I had.
Anything else, other items? So, we say we met Thursday at the joint meeting with city of Bend, Halloween yesterday.
I'll just mention that just before the board meeting today, Holly Harris and Janice Garso and I met with the COO, CFO and medical director for St. Charles and, you know, made our case, our pitch for investment in the stabilization center and, you know, we did not get any kind of a commitment from St. Charles at this time to support the stabilization center. They are, with COVID, wreaking havoc on their operations and finances in the last year and a half. They were, they were really struggling, they were sympathetic, but they were really struggling to figure out how they might be able to support the project. Doesn't mean it's out of the question, but it was, you know, they definitely, they had very long, they had very long faces and we did too.
Yeah, understood. Anything else, Commissioner Dare?
We did have the COAC meeting and we did come to the realization at the end of the meeting that COAC is really going to step it up because we are the fastest-growing region in the state, all of Central Oregon, and we truly need more funding here for our highways, our roads, our projects. And so, I think with our next little bit, I do think more positive things will come out of it, so hopefully...
The Central Oregon Area Commission on Transportation, which is kind of an official sounding board for ODOT, is that correct? Because, I mean, I've done that too.
Right.
And it's tri-county plus the road departments and ODOT staff a little bit, I mean, there's a good mix of people that show up.
Oh, it's an excellent mix, you know, and people from Metolius and Culver, you know, we've got the small communities and the large ones and, but, you know, clearly, after my experience last year, so much funding goes to Portland and really, you know, Highway 97 is, just needs, because of the traffic volume, it needs more attention.
I'm thinking for Commissioner Chang, have you, so that's kind of a COIC parallel group.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just making sure, yeah, we're all set. Oh, yeah, maybe you've seen that in previous careers even, so...
I have.
Okay, good, yeah. Okay, yeah, I don't have anything else. So, at this time, if there's nothing else, we'll go to an executive...